Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting on this Monday, February the 5th, 2018, at 7:02 PM. Mr. Terry, who's called Roe Cleveland?
Icke Brown.
Here.
Deputy Johnson, Patterson, Powell.
He's here. He's sitting out in Florida.
Oh. Okay. Okay.
There he is.
Daniel.
Here.
Mr. Terry.
You say here.
Here, here, sure.
Your lines. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please rise, we will begin our meeting this evening with prayer from Pastor Martin North from Greenwood First Assembly of God, followed by our pledge of allegiance from Chief Will Dawson.
Oh, we thank you for the opportunity that we have to pray, because, Lord, that means that we are asking you for wisdom, which your word says that we have. Be man like wisdom, let him ask of God, who gives it to him liberally. So tonight, Lord, I pray for all of these council members, that you will give them wisdom in whatever decisions that need to be made, and you know what the right thing is, Lord, and I thank you for leading and guiding and directing this session, and we'll give you thanks and praise for what's accomplished in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask the councilmen to take a second and look, if you haven't already, the minutes were January the 8th, 2018, council meeting also, or January 29th, 2018, special call, council meeting. And ask for approval of the minutes. Motion to be approved, Mr. Barrett. The motion is second to approve.
Brown.
Yes.
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 Daniel.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Also, on the agenda at this time, we have bid open, opening scheduled, or are we prepared to bid? Okay. Mr. Stewart. Here we go. Here we go. Here we go. The clock is weird.
Mayor Council, January 28th, appreciate you having us, we're getting us not for opening minutes for a zero rehabilitation project, a shoe replacement project, various locations in town. The first bid is from Goodwin in Goodwin. The bid is accompanied by a bid bond from the President of the partnership, ten thousand five hundred percent of the total bid. Contractors submitted a bid price of $175,047.00. $175,047.00. Second bid is from, this company by a bid bond, amount of five hundred and fifty. Contractors submitted a bid price of $206,252.00. $206,252.00. Last bid is from A.J. Greenwood. It's accompanied by a bid bond, amount of five hundred and fifty of the total bid. They submitted a total bid price of $179,599.00. That's the last one.
Mayor, we'd ask for a motion to accept the whole letter, I promise, if they qualify.
I have questions. Are any of these local leaders, local, any city agreement leaders?
No.
None of them are local.
Okay.
I'd like to motion, we accept the parent's vote, Peter.
Second. The motion is second.
Brown.
Yes.
Deputy Johnson.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
I'd like to make a motion that allow the mayor to enter into the contract. Second.
Motion is second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Deputy Johnson.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Thank you. Are you good? Again, Mr. Stewart, being here rather than raising your voice. Next thing on your agenda is the approval of Mayor's mile report. We don't necessarily do that so much in voices. We have to be able to keep council area a little bit, what we're doing, what I'm doing. Sometimes, actually, I visit Little Rock this, January 23rd, to my first Arkansas part, I own the ATQ, so I'll be there in Little Rock. It's a little scary, to be honest with you, because normally when I get a letter from ATQ on my desk, it's usually not good news, but I've been appointed to a compliance advisory panel up there, so I attended first meeting for a period of meeting, and basically found out what I'm supposed to be doing on this panel, or what this panel found, and it's all about recycling in the state of Arkansas, so it's going to be very interesting, and enjoy that trip, and it's going to be an interesting year, to say the least, on that committee, there's lots of neat people. The other trip, short trip, went to Portsmouth, be a part of, chairman, actually, of this committee, Metropolitan Planning Organization, Portsmouth, and many events up there, and got a lot of things accomplished, and believe I do, so that's a couple trips on that. Recognizations and acknowledgements, that's on the list on the agenda, I would ask, at this time, that Councilman Terry, Lance Terry, Councilman Powell, Councilman Brown, be up front. Would. You got it, finally legit, is what this basically means, very well, so be proud of it, you got it. Municipal League every year, continuing education for the councilmen and mayors alike, and these two gentlemen to my left, received their continuing education certificate, this is Councilman Rod Powell, in recognition of successfully completing six hours of continuing education, a certified municipal official's training for the year 2017, so there you are, sir. Congratulations. And Councilman I.C. Brown Jr., in recognition of successfully completing six hours, I think you skipped out one, no. Six hours of continuing education, you were there, okay, municipal, a certified municipal official's training for the year 2017, congratulations. And this young man, it's a very one here, the Arkansas Municipal League presents this certificate, municipal official's certificate, Councilmember Lance Terry, in recognition of successfully completing 21 hours of certified municipal official's training, training topics included municipal finance, municipal personnel management, and municipal governmental structure, so there you are, sir, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Just so folks know, again, this is continued education, and Lance continued, got this, so they continue to go to conferences and learn about issues regarding municipalities, so I think it's important that everybody knows that they continue to do that. Mini reports, South Southwest Boys and Girls Club, you have any reports in there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I just wanted to put that together, in my child's age, the kind of money that we've lost in the last five years, we've lost, basically, about $90,000 plus in the last five years, almost cut to half by United Way, of course, United Way, it's hard right now, it's hard, you know, you have Whirlpool closed, train, all businesses around and everything, and it kind of got signed. The National Boys and Girls Club, they used to give roughly about $70 million pass out through to all their organizations, now it's down to about, I want to say it was 28.5, 28.6 this year, and they geared towards different programs, a lot of them, we don't qualify. Last two years, we got 7,500, this year we're going to get 10, but we still got to cut about 40,000 off of it. State, they got TANA, I think I might have brought you a news article on that, where when you scholarship people in, and people who couldn't afford stuff, they used to reimburse us a little bit of, which lets you know, I mean, $27,000, we were scholarshiping a lot of people in, you had to have evidence to get reimbursement, so the state quit that back about three years ago, and that hurt very much. Talking to new march director and everything today, Hot Springs, their Boys and Girls Club, they suffer for a lot of the same thing. Next Tuesday, they're closing their doors, okay? A lot of clubs have cut their scholarships down, we have not. Now, we verify a little bit more closer, but we don't turn anybody away. And you look at it, and you go, how in the world did you lose 40% of your budget? When I come up here, and I, you know, it's just not to tell y'all, it's also a question, I.C. Brown, I think Lance, and Tim, a bunch of y'all rock, had some great ideas, you know, ended up going up on our after-school program. We listen, we take, you know, all your recommendations, and we put them together. This year, our contract comes up in December, so I really want to let y'all know what we got going on there, the reason that the Boys and Girls Club needs the city council, and needs the city. We're just finishing basketball, between basketball cheerleaders, close to 308 kids, we're going to have over 700 playing baseball and softball out there, there'll be 1,500 people, a night out there. At least black football, it's the biggest black football here we've ever had, soccer's wrong. It's a place that brings with kids and needs, and I know, y'all know that, but I really want to bring that home, and also to say, thank you, because if you looked at that without y'all, we'd be closed up, without United Way, we'd be closed up, so I just wanted to come by and say, thank you very, very much, and there's a lot to give.
Kenny?
Yes, sir.
There's an acronym there, TAN, what does that stand for?
TAN.
TAN?
Yes, sir.
What does that mean?
Means money for us.
It's just not there. No money.
Yeah, zero, zero, I'd have to get back with you on that, I, you know, I just look at that.
It's like it's gone, so.
Sorry.
It looks like it's gone.
It's gone, we're hoping it comes back. They did pass it, three years ago, they passed that they were going to do it again, but then, when legislation came, they didn't allocate the money, so we did all the groundwork to get everything laid out, and then they didn't pass the money for it.
Is that state, or?
That's state, that's state.
We'll have lady out the apple there. Temporary assistance for needy families.
Exactly, that's what I was going to say, but.
Certainly temporary.
Yeah, and it was, it was, it was a really good program, I think they reimbursed us a dollar, dollar and quarter a day for our after-school program, for kids, so it was really, and we were able to really push it, and again, if we had the funds to push our after-school, we'll sit here about 150 kids right now, in another month, when the weather warms up, and we can go outside and everything, we'll be getting 200, 210 every day, and every kid that walks through that door gets a high five, they get something to eat right when they walk in, after they put their backpack up, homework assistance, there's a lot of good things going on. So, anybody have any questions, or, thank y'all again.
Thank you, Kenny, and you know that I know, oh, how hard you work, and very much appreciate it, you can't not have that, we appreciate you, thank you. SRCA, all members of the board here, we have a written report, complete in our packet. If you have any questions, again, just let me know, or pass it on to Damian, if you have any questions, or issue, Parks Commission, dispel, do you have anything?
We're here, but we don't have anything, we're just checking for anything.
Okay, council, do you have anything? Dispel. Is Nathan still hanging around? Good for you. Didn't run him off yet. Gary Grimes Consulting will no longer be on your list, that's something we're not going to be having in future at this time. Number five, it's M.A.C. Construction Partners update, I don't think I saw Mr. Rajon here, Water Waste Water Commission, Radrick, anything?
The Senator, sorry.
Oh, you have a report, we'll take that, okay. Good deal. All right, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, it is a citizen forum, and I'm almost near doing this, I decided I'd do it one more time in the year 2018, this is your name, right? We have this at the back of the room, I think everybody in the room knows it now, but just in case you did not know, to sign up, if you were a citizen forum, I would acknowledge tonight, if you have five minutes to come to the podium and speak, give us your name and address, if you decide to do that. Mr. Niles, if you don't want to sign up tonight, so ask Mr. Niles to come in, and now that I've already said we are, you give your name and address. And this is a time, if you're not aware, to speak on, or ask questions, or speak on any issue you have with the citizens.
Josh Miles, 313, where, 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 I am the trailblazer when it comes to the subject. So I shouldn't be outcast for bringing monies into our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. You come in or you didn't count. As I said before, if you didn't know or didn't intend to decide and didn't, I would certainly give you an opportunity at this moment to step up and speak if you want to. Do you serve? State your name and address, please.
My name is Gerald Thomas. Well, thank you, Mr. May for the City Council. They're giving me time to speak here. And I'd like to thank you guys and the council. We appreciate, thank you for your time that you give to our city, see if kind of places people want to live. And also raise our families and the protection that we get from our local police department and their children and grandchildren. And as I already stated my name, I have 75 years of my life. I've spent 60 years here in Greenwood. There've been five generations from my grandparents to my grandchildren. And needless to say, I love Greenwood and all the outlining areas around it. I'd like to speak tonight about selling alcohol in the city of Greenwood, whether it be private or public. I know that everyone here tonight, you remember just a few months ago, COVID-19, 2017, when Stephen Paddock took lives for 58 innocent people, leaving 546 injured. And this has been on the news several times since that time. But I'm sure that you did not hear that that same day, 240 people died from the effect of alcohol. And they've been dying every day since then. The National Institute of Health says that estimated 88,000 people died from alcohol-related causes annually, making alcohol the third-leading preventable cause of deaths in the United States. De-alcohol kills 4,700 people each year. 2015, 10,265 people died in alcohol impaired driving practices. Drunk driving costs the United States $199 million every year. About three months ago, October 26th, the President of the United States issued a national state emergency over 50,000 deaths that impacted by the use of opioids. However, in the same timeframe, 88,000 died from the effect of alcohol, over one and a half times more. I ask you tonight, why is there outcry in our country against the destructive of alcohol? It's because we can generate a few bucks with it. Don't know about you guys, but my, my life, to me, is worth more than just a few dollars, especially it's my life. And one more thing I'd like to share tonight about is the location of this new sports club wanting to bring alcohol into our city. Highway 10 Spur is a very congested highway. Everybody knows that. With two lanes, a turn lane, there, I don't know, 40, 50, 60 businesses plus some residential houses on a three-mile stretch from Highway 71 to Town Square. The last 1.5 mile from Webster Street to Town Square has about 90% of these entities owned. And also makes it that only sidewalks of this 1.5 mile is from Farmer's Bank to the square. 200 yards long and only consisting after 1.5 miles of driveway and customer parking lots for all these stores. There's a retirement facility called Golden Years, Golden Village, Year's Village, I'm sorry, north of Weber Street. And then there's the Greenwood Retirement Center, which has, I think, about 64 residents and they play a few to stay full. Many of these folks are physically and mentally challenged there at this facility. And it is located almost directly across the street from this new club, this sports club. Many of these folks walk up and down, back and forth, and across that highway from early morning to late at night. And I know if you've been out that way, you've seen them many times. And there's some places on this stretch that people are walking on the highway. I mean, they, no children walk on them. And alcohol is a drug. It is a fact that a poor person becomes legally drunk, their eyesight becomes impaired, and also the reflexes slow down. Now, if you take Highway 10 Spur, 15,000 victims every day and people walking on the side of the road and mixing with alcohol, that would threaten, that would be a tragedy. So I hope that our city has not become, or had to come to the place that we would trade a life for a few bucks. And I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Anyone else? Thank you. Move on to the next item. Agenda additions, even or not, council? Department of Defense have no agenda additions. So I'd like to remember if you can make a call. So we will continue on.
I will ask that.
Oh, here we go.
No, it's not an addition. It's a shift. I asked that, I've been asked that number eight, be moved to the top of business because the individual was supposed to address it. Jared, happy you're there, my friend.
Well, half the other president. You good with that, council? So we will begin with that. Mr. Ricketts, you're up.
Sure.
I have new business, but we're going to treat it.
Mr. Derry, here, council. Ordinance that was passed last month, 18-01, I'll read it after it's passed. I probably looked in my box. I came across a section of the ordinance, section, I believe the old ordinance is 18, or section 3A, but the new one here that we had wrapped up is 4A. In the ordinance, it went on about the mobile vendors, mobile food vendors, mobile vendors, not being able to dispense food and drinks or sell items within a right-of-way, at the eve of a street that does not exceed 25 hours of the city of Greenwood. Reading that, the way I interpret it is if we have a high-risk drug, whatever we have, we're not able to stop in neighborhoods. So maybe that we should address that to avoid a conflict in the future before it does. I spoke with Mr. Derry about this, where we actually need to wrap up a definition for frozen drinks and beverages and make some exclusions in Section 4A.
When Officer Ricketts brought this to my attention, I thought he could have got to speak with him a little earlier than now because I thought, I thought we had kind of cleared this up back. Council members, it's several months ago, this was an issue. We talked about it, talked about it. To be honest with you, I thought we kind of walked away from the drawing board with our banking tariff. As Officer Ricketts explained, he's doing the job well and he's checking these ordinance and everything else. So as it stated, it would come summertime, whoever decides to go in the neighborhood would have been against our ordinance. Are you seeing the business? Boy, yeah. Frozen treats and beverages, it could be, certainly that mostly would be an ice cream truck, but. So young portals.
Yeah, wait. All the yellow is made for what, the packaging or packaging or packet?
My life, my life, of course, it's. And this, I was the one that says, oh, that's just progress there, too.
That's, that's what was originally in your packet, the base of that.
Just to show you what it is.
Well, that was the new provision that we decided that we needed more of, some yellow, uh, new, but Jared, come on.
It does not, because brother, I could just get you a little humor. Try to, not good humor. Thank you very much. Thank you, big girl. The discussion today was, was pretty intense, to be honest with you, about trying to decide what a frozen treat is. And I believe somebody in the room said something about, well, as long as frozen, it could be food, well, that's a whole different ballgame because that's a food vendor. And so we, we're not going to allow taco, tacos, I guess, to be sold. This is basically just to give you the freedom of the ice cream, snow cones, that sort of thing, which again, I, I kind of didn't agree with you months and months ago, we kind of got that all settled. Evidently we did, or the ordinance did not. We never got it.
Well, a couple things. One, the swan truck deals in this right?
The swan truck is, is not part of that because for some reason, I don't know why.
Well, on our solicitor, they're exempt. Because they're called to be out.
Right, right. And they're typically, and we had, there was a discussion about swan trucks specifically about parking in the road. Typically, a swan truck, the point of the driver, if you're there, see, it's only a little ton, so.
And just to reference some ice cream truck stuff, John, we're talking.
I know. They're exactly right. And they're good.
Well, I mean, I'm opposed to be passed this ordinance with the provision.
Good officer, first, very good officer.
The motion is second.
Brown.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
How.
Daniel.
Yes.
Yes.
unanimous. An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number 18 to 11 regulating operation of local food vendors slash global vendors, concession traders, push carts in the city of Greenwood, Arkansas, fireman comment, declaring emergency and travel bans.
So you won't go ahead with the emergency clause? Yeah. Well, I might motion this a little ways, Dave, if I read.
The motion is second.
Brown.
Yes.
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 Make a motion to adopt.
The motion is second to adopt.
Brown.
Yes.
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 Daniel.
Yes.
Yes.
I make a motion to renew that emergency clause.
Tag it.
Motion is second to the next emergency clause.
Brown.
Yes.
Yes.
How. Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Thank you, Officer Ricketts. Go home and feel better. Okay, we will go to what was number one, number two, now, Rod, Mr. Cr, or Councilor of the Council, sorry, ordinance establishing permitting and process for our ourselves third reading.
Okay. Council, if you haven't amended ordinance or not. I've got some added language. It's not language that we talked about on the third visit to this that we tabled, but it's language that I've added after this, it's with the municipal league. I'm going to start at the top and then just kind of go down by page by page. And if you can reserve your comments and to the end, then we'll turn around and go back through it and visit with and talk about it and hear from people out that want to speak on behalf of, who already have, and thank you for your comments, Josh Niles, and thank you for your comments, Mr. Thomas. So if we're on a month five at this point, and this will be the third reading for those of you who haven't been here all this time, third, takes three readings to make a law, so we're at the point where we're about to make a law. In getting to this point, there's, there's two things that we can't do anything about. In 1942, the citizens of Lower Sebastian County voted Lower Sebastian County Drive and all the cities that reside in it. There is nothing we can do about that. There's a lot of crazy stuff on Facebook and there's absolutely nothing we can do about that. This is the wrong forum for that. Also, something we can't do anything about is in the year 2017, it's Act 1112, Arkansas legislatures put in our lap that anyone that wanted to come and ask for a private club license, they, they had to come before the City Council of Greenwood first. And then they went to ABC. That's where we got in this, that's where we got, where we're at right now. Again, there's nothing we can do about that. State legislatures can, and Lee will be a legislator next year, so y'all can work on him. What I, so what I've done is Mr. Niles had come five months ago and asked to have a private club license. As the gears started turning in my head, I started thinking, this is never going to stop. I mean, we can turn him down, he'll be right back next month, or somebody else will be back next month. Whether I'm for or against it, it's irrelevant. We need to have a permitting process in place, we need to have supplemental fees in place, and we need to have additional taxation in place. So that's where this document has come, come about. I'm going to just read the title real quick and then I'll start going down with the language that I've added since the last time we voted. So this, this is an ordinance establishing a permitting process and a privilege permit for selling or dispensing any controlled beverage within a private club, within the city of Greenwood by business license by the state as a private club. Sell alcoholic beverages, limiting permit fees and city supplemental tax of 10% on a beer, wine, 14% of mixed drinks upon the annual gross receipts, which are derived from repealing any ordinance in conflict, establishing penalties for violations of these provisions and other purposes. As I said, when I, when I first started this, my intent was to set the taxation at the state max. And that, that would be the state max right there. So since my visit with Arkansas Municipal League, the first two whereas's that are underlined, that is, that is, that is the language I'm attempting to put in this. And it refers to the act that put this in place, the legislature of state of Arkansas passed Act 1112 of 2017, which now is required under ACA 3-9-222. Local city council approves all applicants for a private club permit prior to them being submitted to the alcoholic beverage control division. This was also recommended by Lanny Richmond of Arkansas Municipal League that we put this in there. Also, if you quickly go back to the very last page, I've added references. I know I've, there's a lot of people that I've visited with on this, and I wanted y'all to know who they were and their phone numbers. So Lanny Richmond, this past month, most of my conversations have been with Lanny Richmond. He's the staff attorney for Arkansas Municipal League. He has replaced David Chung. David Chung was the one that worked with cities primarily on legislation. You'll also see I've got Michael Harry's phone number there and his address from Arkansas Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission. I talked to him early on. City of Darnell ordinance passed in December, since we've been on this. And City of Darnell's ordinance reads exactly like ours. They're, and probably because, you can tell, they copied off of Conway's. And then if you look down below that, it's a City of Conway, Arkansas ordinance, 0-10-118. I think the only problems we found with that is they predated the Act 1112. And so I think we've made corrections to that with that. I looked at City of Jones Burrows and you can see that in there, and we really didn't adopt anything they had, and theirs is an old ordinance. And of course, we have our approved city attorney. So he's been involved since the beginning as well. So we can, those are who we, who we can lean on. So, so the next one is whereas the City, City Council of Greenwood, Arkansas, the diaries establish a procedure where this approval process can be in compliance with Act 1112 of 2017. It was recommended that we add that. If you'll go down to the bottom of the page, you can see, like I mentioned last time, I work on definitions. And I've defined assisted living center as a system of housing and care for senior citizens who need daily assistance. If I turn the page, I define church. Church is a building that is primarily used for religious worship. If you'll go down one more, you'll see daycare. I've defined it as a means of building that's primary purposes to care for the needs of people who do not be fully independent, such as children or elderly people. If you look at the permit, Lanny, he's added this law passed by the General Assembly of the state of Arkansas. We're just referring back to the state of Arkansas. If you look, where the definition for school, school is a building used primarily for educating If you look at youth activities organization, is an established place for the primary purpose of providing activities to character building of youth, unemancipated people, such as the Boys and Girls Club. All right, if you'll go on page three, if you go down to L, and look at the underlying portion, this was recommended by Lanny Richmond. It's, it's in line with state law, how state law already reads. You know, we've had a lot of conversations of whether it's building to building, property line to property line. We just, he said, his recommendation is just make it read like state law. And that would be building to building to be measured from the nearest point, property line, point, to the nearest property line of the property of any school, church, youth activities organization, daycare, or assisted living center within the city limits of Greenwood. There again, this is all within the city limits of Greenwood. It's not Fort Smith, it's not Waldron, it's not 10 feet from the city limits of Greenwood, it's not 10 inches. It's just in the incorporated boundaries of the city of Greenwood. And I think we had that conversation last time about a church that resides outside of the city limits of Greenwood. They do not afford our protection. If you go to the next page, let's see. I think I do not have anything I attempted to add. Okay. Lanny also said, in keeping with the state of Arkansas, if you go to Section 12, they have their fees. So when you go to the state of Arkansas, and there again, I do not know exactly what happens after ours. I've read more than I had last month, but I believe the fee is $3,000. And if you go halfway, their fiscal year runs from June to July. And if you go halfway, they're going to make you pay $1,500. He said, you could keep it like the state and not have somebody come. Your fiscal year runs from December to January, or January from December. He said, if somebody showed up in October, it's kind of a tough deal to charge $1,500 and then turn around, January 1, charge, send them a bill, $1,500. He said, so you might want to have that like the state does. It sounds reasonable and fair. If you go to the next page, Section D, this comes from the municipal league, when we're at the municipal league conference last month, they were putting it in D, and this is in line with the state of Arkansas? I'm sorry, Section 17, D. This would be in line with the state, they're the same way. Any applicant who denied a permit for any reason by the city or state shall not reapply to the city for six months. If you go to the state, you're denied. You cannot go back to revisiting for six months. So we just stay in line with the state. If you'll go to the next page, on Section 19, this is from municipal league. Our penalty section's the same, but at the very end, just comma, would be plus court costs and applicable fees. So if we went into the penalty phase and they charged $250 a day, there again, it's plus courts and applicable fees. That's from the league. The league has, Lanny said that there's, this is happening other places. This is not just happening with us. And he's getting a lot of calls. And he wants, once our ordinance is passed, a stamp and signed and dated, he wanted a copy, service he wants it. So also, one of the aldermen that, and I've got it written down, I don't know his name right this minute, from Arlington, said he wanted our ordinance. He was going to turn around and attempt to put it on at, since we've already taken all the arrows and taken all of the, that he would sell. All right, so I'll go back to the front and open this up for conversation.
Right, I've got a couple of questions. Your definition, page two, under private club, it's referencing the 39202 state code.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's from the league.
Right, that's, that was added.
Yes, that's underlined.
Your definition is saying it means a nonprofit or nonpro, or for-profit business. 39202 doesn't have that. That's not the language in that. It is nonprofit.
I agree with you. That's the way I read it. And you know, that was a part of a cut and paste from the city of Conway's. It seems like if we.
I think, I think.
We just refer to the legislation, state legislation, 39-20214. We could put it on them and decide whether they need it or not.
You know, if you shorten that sentence down to this. I, I agree with what Andy said.
Nonprofit as described in 3920214, otherwise you're creating a conflict with 39.
All right, let's, let's restate this. Tell me exactly what you want to say, for sure.
Well, you could probably just say it means a nonprofit corporation organizing this due to laws of state, operate, serve alcohol, the Arkansas 39202. Or a profit business, if you strike that, I think.
We just strike for, for profit.
But you still could have did that, just had another spot, is that right?
Well, 3920214 speaks in terms of nonprofit. So we don't want a conflict with existing state law, so we just take that out totally.
No, I'm not an attorney. I'm not a lawyer. But when you read it, when you establish one of these private clubs, you have to loosely build a nonprofit to, that's a time to. Is that right now?
That's why I read the statute.
That's right.
If you want to simplify, um... Well, I would say, until we don't get into distinction, nonprofit, not-for-profit, means a corporation or business authorized and existing under the laws of the state authorized to serve alcohol at state Arkansas pursuant to 3920214 at the Arkansas Beverage Control Division.
We're not, we're not the same profit or nonprofit, but just referencing the state law.
Whatever, whatever state law it is, whatever they define profit or not, it adds under that act, that's what we love.
Charlie, did you get that, or do you want my copy?
Yes, I have it. Strike a nonprofit and for-for-profit, both of those stri- stricken, and add the word pursuant.
It means a corporation or business, and then right before the statute number pursuant to.
Yes, got it.
We want to change it to Arkansas Beverage Control Division.
I think it's Arkansas Alcohol, Alcohol, A, A, D, C.
You want to add Arkansas?
Arkansas Adlet, Arkansas Adlet, Arkansas Alcohol Beverage Control Division.
Okay, between the V and that, and the large capital A for alcohol, we're adding Arkansas. What else you got, Neil?
Uh, page 3L on your, I don't know, we've got so many highlights and so forth. Building to building is showing italics on here. I don't know if you're reading that stay there? That you, that's, is it done?
The italics, I'm sorry, the italics I attempted to remove, but I did not remove it because it was what was in third reading. This does get confusing, because I'm adding and removing. So the building to building would be removed. Anything in italics, I'm attempting to remove, and I think that's the only thing I see.
Now, there's one, I'm in D on that same page. You have breached and established.
Yeah, there's.
Where was that? I don't even...
Oh, I'm in, okay, I want to remove, is the name breached? That's actually italicized. And replace it with established. Charlie, any problems? D, D, D.
Just removing the word breached?
I want to remove the word breached and replace it with established. Good catch, I see. So we're wanting to strike that.
All that's true.
So building to building would be stricken.
I don't know if I have it.
We've page five yet?
Well, before you get there, you talked in, in 12, Rod, about the half fee.
Yes.
The section 12, all permit fees shall be paid between the 6th and 1st, 6th and 1st person here, obtained after July 1, every one half. What, is it, is it somewhere else that, that the term of our permit? At one point, we were January through December. Is that still someplace?
I don't see it.
Permit.
It states that...
You're not giving it.
Let's clear it down.
Okay, you're, you got it in section E, page three, shall run for a calendar year, annual renewal case shall be due payment 6th and beginning January 1. In 12, you're just saying it's after July, it's half that amount.
Half the month.
Okay. I think it's there.
That, that was just a league recommendation on being fair. He said, you want to just leave it, and they hop up Thanksgiving, you charge $1,500, you charge $1,500, again, that's y'all's business, and it's legal and defensible. They said to be fair, and that's more consistent with state law on the next step.
I just want, I thought we were missing that.
Okay, there's, there's some other italicized on page five, section 16. I'm sorry I missed that one first, I'm going through. I propose in that, we remove 16, because it's, it's redundant. We've already stated it in form of 4G, and I'm going back on something I did two weeks ago, so I'm, okay, you're saying. So I would like to remove section 16, and then straighten out the numbers. So section 17 will now become 16, and section 18 will become 17. Section 19 will become 18, section 20 will become 19. Carrie, did you see it? Charlie, were you following that?
So council knows, we don't ordinarily pass up, or this is not to keep in front of you, because you can certainly obtain them anytime, but I thought this being as important as it is, if you have a copy in your hand, as the council looks at it, in case you see a question or something, comments that you'd like to hear. Hopefully, most everybody got one.
Would anybody like to ask any questions on the ordinance?
If I could, if that's okay.
Would you mind permission, uh, pardon me?
And, and I know this is probably very well-known with this crowd, but I just want to emphasize one more time that the ordinance that you have in your hand, or making the ordinance, is to establish a procedure for the approval process. And that's all this is. I know, over the many, many months of working on this, council certainly works hard, and sometimes it gets clouded as if this, this is something to allow alcohol, so they can agree with it, and it's not. It's to govern, if you will, the process of the application, in case it ever does become literally. I think you're going where you're going.
May I add to that, and I, because I ain't kind of what you're gonna say. But I want to, and I'm not speaking for these guys, in my, my way of thinking, these, this is about planning. This is about, it's no different than our planning, working with Sunny Bell, and the way you lay out R1, R2, you know, commercial, all of those kinds of things for a city. I've spent quite a bit of time in the last month myself, trying to educate myself about this. I spoke with Lanny Richmond at the municipal league, I spoke with him afterwards on the phone a few times, and by email, I spoke with Michael Harry about it. And, you know, this, this isn't about protecting the church. It's, churches and schools are landmarks typically within municipal, you know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't establish that it can't be 1,000 feet from a gas station because they kind of come and go, right? And that's where, you know, as explained to me, that's where that comes from in, in various laws that you read about churches and schools. Those are, those tend to be landmarks within a community that, that don't move around. It's not about, we're not trying to protect the church, we're not trying to protect the school necessarily. I mean, that's, that's where the language comes from. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would just ask that, uh...
Again, I'm sorry.
Josh Miles, 13, where are we?
Thank you.
I would just ask that the language be just rewritten a little bit. I would ask that we remove the 1,000 feet, actually in both conditional use, conditional use, business license, reference to the alcohol sales, outlines the same facts of who can be there, who can not be there, allows the council approval, thus and therefore, through not to allow into our city. I believe that a man's character is defined by his actions. I believe that my character is defined as a good man in our city. So I believe other businesses that would come into our city, that they would be subject to conditional use, not actually to a feet-by-feet purpose per landmark. And I believe if we go to the case law, that actually probably is correct, what we should do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I agree to some of the original statements there, because we've made a million changes here just to beat up of what the state statute reads. I don't think the statute should, uh... Well, that's, we can move 1,000 on this thing, which is, again, not a private club.
1,000 feet for the alcohol, for liquor store.
It went under 2,000, I'm not sure. It seems to me like the, just like we're not really dictating, somebody putting in an establishment here, we're just allowed to put little rock paths. And so whenever they put in for where they're gonna put this establishment, wherever it may be, the state of Arkansas is in the same zone, it's too close to a church or something. I don't know why we have that. That's why they threw back in our lap.
That's exactly what they threw back in our lap.
But they're still gonna go through the process once it gets past us. All we're doing is telling people they can help our city make money, or help themselves make money. That's what we do here by approving or not approving something at this level. The state still has to go through all this, and you get all the folks to go down there with their pitchforks and torches and tell them about it. They're just trying to hope they're not having to deal with it on a basis, monthly, which most people don't realize it, but there always had, were people down there all the time applying licenses in Greenwood and to other places. Nobody cared, because they always got denied. It may just depend on which faction showed up complaining about it, if they had letters from the state rep, the mayor, and chief police, which that's what you used to have to do, you have to just get all those letters and have people support or not support. They present all that to the pipe guys on the ABC or gals, and then they say, dare they? And so now, they don't want you to have pretty much letters down there, look to each paperwork. They want us to just take all they need right here. Well, I don't like that. I don't think we should have to. I think we should do our best to make sure they still have to take the heat down there. I couldn't care less, one way or the other, if there's a restaurant, the sales alcohol private club, or anywhere called in this town. But I do care that the state's whipped out of this deal and making us have to suffer for it on personal levels. I'll tell you, from that point, I, I contacted the Arkansas Municipal League a few weeks ago and directly asked them that they take this up with the state legislature, who has thrown this in our lap. And if you read the laws, the way they're written, what you can and cannot do, and the way the ABC has handled some of these things, they're creating conflict with the way this works, I asked the municipal league directly to get involved with this, with the state legislature on behalf of their municipal city. And they have answered. I don't suspect they will answer. But I try to make a point that you, you guys have created this mess, help us get it straight. Because it's not, you know, that marijuana is next, you're gonna, you're gonna go through the same process again with that marijuana.
It's already passed, because I was making, yeah, it's from the flag.
But if they take what that might have, it's...
Yeah, they're figuring, or they're gonna do that, do that thing, and then put it back to us. I worry.
We'll have no problem passing that here because voters of our county have already said that it's okay to have medicinal marijuana.
Pardon me?
We'll have no problem passing that here through this board with zero negative feedback. That already been voted on and passed in our county.
We're gonna set up an institution just like the ABC, that would determine how you feel about giving a permit for a cultivation facility, a dispensary. And they're gonna knock that back in our lap, say you have to...
Well, but I'm saying, if anyone comes, when they start coming to us with those applications, we'll have no problem, hopefully, yes, with that, because the voters have already voted for it.
Right.
We're gonna be asking them to think that we're going against each other.
I'm all for what you're saying there, yeah.
I'd like a motion if we put this on for the third reading, but I don't know.
Second. We have a motion and a second to put on for the third reading. I don't know.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Sam Terry?
No.
Mike Terry?
No.
Passes up to the room. An ordinance establishing a permitting process and privilege permit for selling or dispensing any controlled beverage within private club, within the city of Greenwood, has lost its spots, that is a private club to sell alcohol, beverage, levying permit fees, and a city supplemental taxes 10% of beer, wine, and 14% of mixed drinks upon the annual gross receipts which are derived at their front. Repealing any ordinances in conflict, establishing penalties for the violation of these provisions, and for other purposes.
Do you agree with my question? This goes into effect 30 days after your trial is completed.
Thank you, counsel. Next item, Lanny's building, Sunny Bell, ordinance repealing or replacing ordinance
Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Terry, the, I think you have a copy of the guidelines, and we typed it up and put over the changes, and basically wanted to go over with you to see if we're in agreement. If you would, on page one and two, the changes would be changing the guidelines from, guideline to department on page one and two. The next one would be page four, and that would be to delete the highly reflective surfaces and metal siding on the main facade. Page four? Yes. It's, uh, four, section B, three and four.
You've included those.
Yeah, the planning committee would like to have those removed.
Four and five.
Three and four, the highly reflective, plastic metal siding.
The next would be on page seven, there was a notation to confirm these match our current document regulations, they did, like, have those back in there. And that's going to be page 15.
Sunny?
Yes.
What did you just say?
On the, there was a question on that, uh, page seven, to make sure that the setback matched our regulations.
I mean, do you want something, just let me...
No, 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 it, I just wanted to confirm that they do match our regulations.
No change.
Okay. Okay, on 15, on section 7E, was the notation of concrete and old strips, separating turf and shrub areas are required, first and well, regulations. We agree with that. And I think the last one is on page 20, and that has to be brick and stone on the front, and, uh, like, suggestion for the 25% minimum on visible surfaces unless screened by fences and/or landscape.
And where does that end?
That's on page... That's on page twenty, twenty, excuse me. Page twenty is section H.
And what, that's from a copy?
Yeah, that's not the right, they have a percentage. It's not about twenty, yeah, huh? It's not, it's, it's red letter, but it's not.
Well, there, there's a notation off of the sizes, uh, uh, I think this is from Rod. Do we want to add requirement for percentage of high quality material such that you're requiring fifty percent on our heat elevation? And we wanted, uh, a twenty-five percent minimum.
Where does it say twenty-five percent?
Well, that's what it...
It doesn't on there.
It's not a missed copy. That, that whole notation is not.
Yes, I, oh, did you go and take a note?
No.
Okay, H, uh, is the change that, uh, Rod put in there in the notice of stone. It's pointing in there between, uh, brick and wood. Is that, is that copy that you guys took?
No.
Our, our H says much of the existing color in the city is derived from the primary building's finished materials, such as brick, wood, stucco, chair, cock, cop. Also, Tom, there are overturns that are from the nasty example here. I don't know, but I don't even understand what that's talking about.
I think, I think somehow the wrong thing happened sort of on that H.
I don't know about that.
This is the copy that Rod sent me.
Yeah.
But it didn't, it doesn't, it really didn't have that box there that you're showing.
Doesn't have a box here. Well, the question was whether we want to increase the, the brick and siding to fifty percent. And we would like to keep it at twenty, a minimum of twenty-five. Now, we can go a hundred percent depending on what the building looks like, where it's at and all that, but, uh, the, the minimum of twenty-five percent is what, what we're looking at.
So do you think the, where it talks about the percent, I mean, I remember seeing it. Do you think the percentage is somewhere else in this document?
Mayor, I, I feel like it is because that's what we've always gone by. But, you know, I was, I'm just making notations to the, to the sheet that, uh, Rod had given us originally. I don't know where...
I got a feeling that might be.
Do you want to technically compare it with what you're, if you have there, make sure that all the changes that they're seeing or what you're considering?
Nothing.
I mean, on the front.
I can remember.
I, I'm confused. I don't remember it's two.
Remember that?
I think, that was from M H.
I remember the discussion.
That's what she copied studies on.
Mr. Terry said that that copy from...
I think that's my own text, not Rod's.
Well, is that twenty-five percent now? So I would, I would like to keep that, but, you know, uh, apparently this, uh, the red highlighted area, we have, the planning committee have no problem with that talking about.
I'm just telling that to the year.
Yeah.
So can you put, because I don't see any twenty percent anywhere. Can you put that in that section so we know it's a...
Yeah, it does say much next year, but twenty-five percent next year.
Well, I mean, uh, I mean, I, I think that everybody's gonna shoot for, uh, I think the minimum, you know, twenty-five percent, you know? And I know Greenwood Village did a, did a wonderful job there. You know, their looks very, very nice.
The EMT is the side by, the EMT has about twenty-five percent, uh, brick and siding on the front. And, uh, you know, that's again, depending on, on, uh...
It always needs some page number.
But I, I, I guess, you know, to me, uh, I don't know, but I'm thinking on the, on the front, I, you know, I'd probably still like to see kind of a hundred percent and then twenty-five percent of the minimum on the, on the sides that are, uh, like it's visible unless they're, as I said, screened.
Well, what the thing, the planning commission is sensitive of, and I'm sure you guys heard, uh, too, is that Greenwood is an expensive place to do business. And that is one thing that we look at, twenty-five percent minimum. Means they can't go any lower than that without a variance. But the planning commission, looking at the design, and again, we have an architect, so the planning commission is just guiding them. And we wanted to, uh, increase it to fifty percent, maybe five percent, even a hundred percent. And we would go by, you know, we would listen to his recommendation.
I agree with what I see, uh, and I, I don't think we're on risk compared to other places. There's no place we're going.
One clear copy. So when you say a hundred percent, you're suggesting that the whole, if it's a metal building, this is say, that the whole front will be brick?
Right.
And then that twenty-five percent or maybe fifty percent on the sides? And now that's twenty-five percent, maybe the minimum, you're, you're okay with that?
On the sides, if, unless, it says, it says one screening or whatever, is that not worth that? Well, for landscaping or, uh, you know, like on the side, if there's a fence there or whatever.
Is this new construction only or would it be with...
It would, it would be similar to our remodel of the tree park.
Well, that's what, that's kind of where it was headed. We, we allowed ourselves...
And we made a nice building.
Yeah, we did. And, and I think it's fifty percent. I mean, I'm not saying it shouldn't be, but I'm just saying we've allowed ourselves or not forced ourselves to do more than fifty percent on our own building. Well, no, I, I, absolutely.
I like the twenty-five percent. I mean, I think they want to build a nice building with twenty-five.
Well, and we've got Indianapolis down and, and where they use the twenty-five percent.
If every building in town was all brick, it'd look like a tree park. Not landscaping for me.
You mentioned, you mentioned something about metal buildings. That's not just what we're talking about here. You're talking about any new...
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I...
Any commercial.
Yeah, you do commercials.
That's right.
I mean, so they're saying, I mean, once the, the beer deal gets passed and the Fridays comes in, they want the whole front to be a hundred percent?
That's what they're saying.
I agree with that.
I don't, I'm looking at twenty-five percent too, but I would like it outlined in the works. I don't think it's in there right now. You need a number under A to define that that says twenty-five percent of the stuff. Are we saying all sides?
Well, again, that, that depends on, on the building and, and, you know, I feel like the planning commission needs a little latitude on that because of how the building is positioned and, and whether it's visible or not, you know, I, I would hate to see, uh, somebody that has, like, you know, the side of the building that, that you need to see be required to be twenty-five percent, uh, brick on it. I, I think we need to talk about the front.
Well, I think that's where you're asking for the variance, right? I mean, I think you say twenty-five percent and that's the mark.
Yeah.
Then they can go back and ask the planning commission, hey, look, I see you're twenty-nine percent, but this back wall, the back, it's an alley, nobody's gonna see it. Okay, we're into variance.
And, and you could, you could approach it that way.
Oh, I mean, I, I think, yes, it, you know, again, although Greenwood Village, you know, there, those look very nice and stuff, but then I've seen some other buildings where it's twenty-five percent. And, you know, the, the siding above the brick, you know, to me doesn't look, you know, as appealing.
But you got, you got that with, uh, if Greenwood Village do that remodel if they had to put all brick up, you know, around the three sides of those that you can see from the roof.
And there, you know, I'm thinking, you know, not all three sides, you know, I would be willing to take, you know, the, the front, you know, a hundred percent, and then the, the two sides that are still visible or whatever, you know, and the back and, you know, if it's not visible at all, you know, that means the back into the building where it's not ever really seen once you just practically drop behind there and, you know, it's like the deep, just the side.
We just felt like it was, uh, putting an undue burden on, uh, somebody that is trying to do business in Greenwood by forcing them to do a hundred percent on the front.
I agree with that, but I think honestly, AC, I think you, architecturally, you could make a nice building without all brick. I mean, that farm credit building, I think Ryan Hill did that. Very nice looking building in my opinion, from, you know, when it's brick and wood, I guess. I don't know what it is, but, you know, I mean, you could use different textures and whatever to make a nice looking building. And I, I, I wouldn't want to force somebody down the path that says, build me a blank wall because it's brick.
Well, there, there, and I, I would say, you know, and again, I agree with you, like, you know, the, the farm credit building, you know, but that's mainly on a, a commercial thing. I'd like to say some stipulation that if it is in a more, or been a butt to a residential area or something like that, that, you know, it might have to go some consideration there.
Well, most are vertical areas, especially on a more size, uh, and you already do a butt, uh, residential areas.
And I think, I'm saying, you know, Walgreens, Factory Supply, you know, they...
You know, Papa Will, should they have, you know, if you're, if you require them to do a hundred percent of brick on their building?
No, I mean, uh, but I guess that's, I guess you're, uh, I mean, I guess they had to find stucco. I mean, that's what, you guys ever talked about with stucco there or?
Not, not much.
They, uh, you know, if you find, you know, something like that, you know, uh...
I would like to see the planning commission make, and I know it's land is the issue. But I would like to see it, and I'm sure y'all may try, I don't know what y'all mean. We're, we work on getting the sods facing the main roads. But that way we can avoid that. Now, I know that I've always looked back to where the building is that has a big restaurants and they're getting people in there because of the location, the way it shapes the apartments there. If that, if whoever owns that, whoever put in a solo building, it's probably going to hit this real well these days. If it, freestanding restaurants in Greenwood seem to always last. Every one of us in a little strip mall seems to never last. So, but I'm just saying with that, and I know that, that, of course, it's laying all down Tinsburg and that's the Greenwood fixture building that's got L shape action and all that and whatever. But hopefully that will get developed. But I would like to see either accessory road and stuff, you know, obviously we'd like to see something that's different off the side of Tinsburg, but, but trying to get folks to make the work that they're facing the main road. Sure a lot of this problem, have the spruce up the side of the building, some of this.
Well, and, and, you know, we've got Casey's company. If Casey's was told to go all brick on the property there, I don't know that Casey would be here.
Well, you know what the thing is? People like Casey's and Taco Bell. They've got Standard, M O, Walgreens, here's, every one of them's at the same.
They come in with a package.
Don't read the general way here.
Package, yeah, for this size, uh, project, or here's the package, we have this size project. And it, it, everything is down, they done it before. I mean, it's like a red, uh, thing working.
Hey, Sonny, to that point, why wouldn't you leave that to say that it's guidelines rather than requirements?
Because, uh, you could, the, the point was that somebody came in and said, well, we're just guidelines. We don't have to deal with it. And we can say that these are a requirement, but if you want to deviate from that, the Dr. Johnson's point, you can ask for a variance and then we will look at it. And if we approve it, we'll bring it to the capital or their approval. And then you get to deviate from these guidelines, sort of requirements.
Apparently this copy operated since the outline holder for it still.
Be like...
This, this copy operated for the outlines on my turn, so I won't even change that.
Yeah, which government started it?
This is my office, twenty-five percent, so I do the twenty-five percent. I don't know where I, I looked these, I don't know where we need to put it here. This is the discussion we've had about getting this stuff signed off by our departments so everybody's getting to see everything that's going on before. I don't know if we need to put it here. We've had this discussion.
And that's...
And, uh, whether it's your signature, whether it's the Sonny's and Tim's and Will's and Stuart's and the Mike's, who's it is, I, I don't know, but we need to put some language here so that we can make sure that everybody's getting the same and communication's getting a little better on, on some stuff.
And it is. And, and in fact, Sonny, you're right, there's probably nothing, I don't know. We have that understanding, department heads do now for sure. And, and when, for instance, he, he has a meeting, we, we have meetings, uh, we have pre-creed meetings, I think we call them, you know, where it's all set and done, and they're, all department heads do sign off. And when I say sign off, maybe there isn't a true signature sheet, as it probably shouldn't.
Yeah, that's, that's where I think, that's, that's kind of where I...
We certainly get approval from, from, I mean, all department heads here, I think, to testify they...
I just think we're...
Yeah.
Does that exist, though, Lance, in the permitting process?
What you're saying, what you're saying too.
But, but...
I want something, I want something meaningful to be put. Or...
You go back and look into some of them?
For example, Casey's, we've probably, we've had at least three meetings up to this point and, and, you know...
I guess what I'm trying to say in a nutshell, instead of speaking out of position, he's like, say, Tim, they can put a ward on here or whatever, and then, and then they come back to Sonny and they do something totally different, Tim, they're not about, you know what I'm saying?
I don't know what that happens.
Well, I'm just saying, though, but it's...
Yeah, but it's...
It changes.
But if it worked, maybe if department heads gave a letter of signing, we need to like post mode, we were at, or this was at, if we submitted a letter to Sonny and we had to compile to that project packet of what we requested approval, that we can't sign off, that, that would be... Well, I think whatever you request, but, you know, at some point, it should be checked. And you've met those guidelines.
And why, and in those cases, these are done with emails, like, uh, the steward, we on Casey's, you know? Uh, steward came and picked up the plans, he looked at them, he shot me an email, here are my concerns. You know, he's like, and this particular case, he said, the only concern I have is the knockbox and where it's located. So I make a notation when I talk to them before the, we, we require a knockbox and it has to be approved by, the location has to be approved by the fire team. Today, they were digging a hole for the signs and we, we had made a, a point in our conversation with them, before you dig that hole, we want our water department there to make sure you're, you're not digging one of our water lines up. And so they called and said, nine, between nine and nine-thirty, we're gonna be out there digging. And Tim says, what if this guy's out here to inspect it? But Tim and I and them have had conversations over a point of water and sewer line connections and, and, you know, he has some things that he has to be concerned about. Now, we have gone through all that. The next meeting that we will have with Casey's will be with their construction manager. This is the guy that sits there and, and tells everybody every day what they're gonna do. He's gonna know who Tim is, he's gonna know who steward is, he's gonna know everybody in, in the city that he's gonna have to deal with, and he's gonna have their information that if he needs it and, uh, somebody come out there and look at a water line, he's gonna, he's gonna phone, call him.
Well, I think, you know, to Lance's point, we need a, a piece of paper and a file when this is all said and done, I think, that these people have checked off on their respective things.
Well, we'd like the planning commission, make, we all, we all bring us those plans. And, and then if everybody has got their, their party and it's signed off before the building permit issue, the other permit is issued, then, then we know that they're doing it right. You know what I'm saying? They're not, they're not, something didn't get left out and then, then they go, hey, we didn't, there's been a water line in or whatever, but then we're single money. You know what I'm saying? I'm saying that happens, but to alleviate that from...
But don't you get, on a building permit, though, say, uh, uh, it's electrical. I mean, you gotta go in at a stage and say, we've inspected the electrical and you've done it to code. Somebody signs that thing, so that you'll know if I'm reporting, when I give you those inspections and they list those things. And that's where Bond over there, he inspects plumbing and, and, you know, he might have five, ten, fifteen inspections at different stages just on the electrical and on the plumbing. But somebody could go back to whatever, a home or fridge or whatever got built in this town and look at it later and say, so there you go.
Well, and, and again, you know, I'm sub division, when we get, when the subdivision is, is finished, we have a book that's decked on, you know, from, from day one up to the, the final flat approval. And when the, the bond is released back to the, uh, the owner, I mean, it's, it's, uh, we have five copies. And I, I showed the mayor one of them, a sample of it, and, and it's pretty well documented. You know, the, the bridge on, on, uh, that bridge, that was way back, I mean, that, it was weird. But we still have a book on like that. And I, and we were looking at something today on, uh, Deer Run. And I've got a list of emails, you know, between, uh, Steve Bedford and Danco, whoever it was, about the, the water tower and the, and the pump station and all that, so all that's documented.
Kind of, I agree, Lance. I think we ought to add a section fifteen...
Kind of, I agree with Lance, I think we ought to add a section fifteen, that is an authority section, that would, you know, require signatures of all the department heads, and then right below that, add a section sixteen, I don't know why we don't have a penalty section. Uh, it looks like we went to court, I just think we ought to have a penalty section that says, we have the right to stop work, and we have a right to fine you two hundred and fifty dollars a day and receive court costs, I mean, we just did it in a, in a out.
Well, we have stop work, it's, stop work order.
So that is, we, we do have that somewhere else.
Yes, and, and we've used it, I mean.
We don't need a penalty section in, as far as this ordinance, if we, we, if they're reading this ordinance, they don't see that there's a penalty section.
Right, I, I don't know, that'd be a question for Mike, but, uh, once we, we serve them with a stop work order, uh, they are bound to stop at that point, and, uh, you know.
Okay. Well, short of that, I think we ought to have an authority section where, you know, the authority is granted by these department heads signing off. That's just my thought. I agree with Lance.
Well, I don't know if it needs to be this or another, like you said, needs to be in a, in the, somewhere before the permits issued, I would say, obviously, everybody can check it and sign off.
Well, I would, I would like to say, you know, put it in there, because when somebody's doing a commercial building, there's going to probably be issued this, and so I'd like for it to come in there, and also I'd like to just say that's one wording that we do have the, uh, the right to issue a, a stop order or something, again, because I was just thinking, they're going to, there's only going to get this thing here, you know, and they're going to say, oh, I don't remember about anything, convention of stop order or anything like that.
Right now, y'all are saying it exists in a policy that we can't really pin down, if we put it in here, it now exists by law.
Chief, do you hear something?
Yeah, uh, same, I don't know if you remember, Donna made a checklist for us a couple of years ago, and kind of made it way, maybe we did that, uh, something, something for each.
Yeah, I mean, we can do it.
Sign off, check off, say, everything that we.
We can just do it as policy for the, you know, for anything, like I said, I, we, we use our, like I said, the emails and, and meeting notes and things like that, that, uh, but, you know, we need to figure out.
I think, yeah, I think it's very simple fix, we, I think what I'm here to suggest is something, I think if a lab somebody, whether it's now, later, ten years from now.
Well, e- even the people that are building shouldn't be able to have something in their hand that says, hey, look, these, these people signed off on this little building, you know, you know what I'm saying, in a worthwhile place.
And the, the plaits that you provide for me, or finished product plans, they come back, those plans come back to my office, and I do sign off on those. All of that process we're talking about is already taking place, but I, I agree, there could very well be a document, a very simple document, and it could be in our, in the office planning room, in the conference room, during the meetings, and.
You check to see if the term radius is.
Absolutely, I take that man's word for it.
Well, and that's.
Well, for instance, Mr. Wiley back there, probably bad choice, Mr., Mr., anybody, Mr. Wiley, what do you want to say, Mr. Wiley, he may not have one particular project, he may not really even need to be in the meeting, but, but he's in there, and, and so is Nathan, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Neighbors, and, and typically, he doesn't have a whole lot, and maybe more green space and stuff like that, so. He, he, in the very first meeting, could sign that thing, go, I'm good, but more detail, water lines, all of that stuff.
You're going to have to have conditions, a serial type thing listed, because if you sign it at the first point, you sign it at three, two, and you can say, as is.
Definitely, yeah.
And the department should list the condition.
Mr. Neighbors, he leaves the meeting, and then we take it on green space.
Well, I just think that'd be something moving forward.
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, we want it, we want it part of this order.
I, I mean.
That's fine.
Here, here's my thought process on that, because we've talked about it, talked about it, talked about it, and we've never really kind of had anything to keep our feet to the fire on, so if we did find a little section there, put it there, then that way we'd cover it. And I agree with Tim, I mean, there has to be some conditions on that, because you could, like I said, you could sign off on green space, and then take it out soon as you let through. So that, that, that has a good point to it, I don't know if that's something that we need to try to figure out how we want to do that, or.
Well, I think just at the end of the, at the end of that process, that's, I, I'm kind of being sarcastic about saying he signs off on it, but at the end of it, everybody's definitely signed, or I.
And, and like I said, if you want, if you want me to put that into the standards or figures of, uh, any commercial, uh, projects, we can do it, we can add it to the ordinance or whatever, you know, like I said, I, I do that for minutes of the meetings, uh, we have, uh, a meeting, pre-construction meeting, and I know everybody that's in there. I know what Tim's concerns were, I know what Stuart's concerns were, I pass those on to the, the people with Casey's, they make sure that those are changed on the, the construction plan, construction plans come back to me, they go back over them, and they see the, the changes that they, and then we move to the next one, but.
I guess I could sum it up, saying, what I might see just from now on and out to the future is that if we have something come up, then we can say, look.
It's their fault.
Everybody, everybody, everybody signed off on it.
Well, I, I like Son, uh, AC's point, I mean, is, is this what you would give to Casey's?
If, yes.
If, if that's what they get handed, I like the comment of having it there, so we can say, we gave it to you, you got a copy of what that is.
Of course, you know, it's on, it normally is on our website, too, and people will, will call me and say, I've got a copy of your, your commercial, uh, uh, guidelines, you know, we've got a question about this, you know, same way with our subdivision regulations, they're on the website, and, uh, uh, so a lot of times, they don't call me or ask me for the.
So.
For that, they get it offline.
It, it seems to me like this process that we're asking for with the department heads should be applicable, whether it's residential or, right? And I, well, we're trying to replace this in the commercial ordinance, maybe what we need is, and, and, again, I agree with everything they're saying, the process is right, it's where does it belong, does it belong in commercial guidelines or requirements? It's only in the commercial requirements, well, does that mean we aren't requiring it on residential stuff? We want the same process to be in place, whether it's residential, commercial, we want the same checks and balances, so maybe we need just a separate ordinance that just says, before final approval of any residential or commercial plan by the planning commission will require.
I'll work on that.
You know what I'm saying? And that way it's not, because, because if we just put it here, that's the only place it is, it's a loophole there, and, and what we're trying to accomplish, maybe we just need a separate ordinance that just says, look, the planning commission not have approval of any plans until the department heads have all had a chance for final review.
I'll, I'll work on that, bring it up.
And then maybe just refer reference to that ordinance to do what it's here, so.
Yeah, because really what we're, what we're asking is not for people making the plans to do something, we're asking the planning commission, the department heads, the mayor, to do something before things get finalized down.
But it'd be a section in this case or page if you're going to do that, department head on the section thing, I think.
I say, I say we work with making that a separate ordinance that makes that policy.
Would that, and that separate orders, would there be, again, just a, a listing of, you know, if you issue a stop order or whatever, like, hey, we'll, we'll know that, or should we put that in here?
I think you can put that in here, we already have that authority, and I think you want to put it in here, just put it here, if at any point, under section fifteen, if at any point, uh, the requirements laid within this guideline proceed to be, um, you know, out of line, then the city reserves rights to issue a stop order.
Yep.
But these are not common guidelines anymore, right?
Requirements.
They're requirements, okay.
So, so adding, adding the section on, you know, reserving the right to issue a stop order is requirements not that, as set forth in this guidelines, as set forth in this. And then the only, the question I have is, I was, I still have to, you know, I'm like a bear, I'm ready to go, but that twenty-five percent, I still don't know what we're saying, or where we're saying it, and, and what the wording's going to be, is it?
They need, we need what you have.
Because there's nothing in this ordinance that we're about to pass that outlines that, so that we know, like, to tell Charlotte, print is the law, if we let us go down.
I think we just need the verbiage that you have. What I did.
I think I have it in the email.
Just want to know what it's about to pass.
But then again, you need to, and then settle on your percentage, whatever.
Yeah.
That was a lot, that was a lot.
I think so, make a motion to adopt the, or, the ordinance on the third, and I found only with the twenty-five percent.
Okay.
But, but, not to. Front page, is nothing changed yet?
I think just change the requirements, the guidelines to requirements versus the guidelines.
All through the doc, but not on this very current ordinance actually, nothing changed?
Right, the ordinance repealing ordinance, commercial guidelines.
I think it is. Other than the plan.
And what, and I know he spread it already, twenty, all this says, enough that he wrote, it's twenty-five percent minimum on visible surfaces unless screened, screened by fences or landscape.
Okay, so that needs to be, that needs to be a le, a number under H, so whatever the next number is.
A number.
I think so, is that, are we doing numbers under H?
Well, it goes to H and then it's, and then you have one.
Yeah, right, so it needs to be one of those numbers under H.
Okay.
Because that H is just sort of this vague statement about, city's pretty and most of the colors of the city are the front, they'll, they'll start putting departments in there.
So you want to add it to number six?
Number six, and add that little box, second there?
Yes, not the box, it's this.
Down there.
Right, that's not the box.
I'm going to say what it's decided.
Okay. No, the box is just a number eight.
Yeah, right.
So H to six, maybe, and twenty-five percent minimum on visible surfaces unless screened by fences or landscape.
Twenty-five percent minimum, twenty-five percent, we, we have to say twenty-five percent of what, so it's going to be that wood, stucco, brick that's in the top of that.
Minimum material?
Yeah, a minimum of twenty-five percent of visible walls of the building shall consist of brick, wood, stucco, whatever's there on H.
Okay, Sonny's going to have to help me fix that up.
We, everything that should exist in what we're trying to do, twenty-five percent of the visible should be made up of those materials outlined in H.
Well, I'm just saying, twenty-five percent minimum of visible surfaces unless screened by fences or landscape.
Shall consist of.
Consist of.
Brick, wood, stuff.
Well, I'm saying when you say wood in there, does that mean that's relaxed?
Such as bricks, stone, wood, stucco, terracotta.
But when you have wood in there, does that mean you lack siding, or, you know, or, I mean, because we're talking about, I'm thinking, twenty-five percent, I think we're talking of something, uh, of such as like brick, rock, uh.
If somebody came to the design like that, I'm sure the planning commission is like, uh, what we want to support is the first twenty-five, uh, percent of the rock, brick, stucco, or, or brick, and then the rest of it, you can do, and with the wood, and we want the, the siding to go horizontal and not vertical.
That's what, that is what I'm saying, when you say twenty-five percent of the, needs to be finished materials such as brick, if you say wood in there, then that seem like that's saying can be, be wood there, I mean, I haven't had any.
We would take wood out and just put brick, stucco, and top, with terracotta top?
The terracotta tile, I mean, is there a?
Stone, rock.
Is, um, stone, stone.
That would fit stone in there, too.
Stone, replace wood with stone?
What about marble?
It does.
Is that stone, is that, is that stone, marble?
I mean, he had, uh, he had inserted stone between brick, brick, stone, wood, stucco, and terracotta top.
Oh, did it, and stone?
Twenty-five percent masonry. That's stone and brick.
Well, again, is, uh, stucco or, or that, what was it?
Really, yeah.
Is, is that, that's not really considered a masonry, is it, or? Is it, is it considered masonry?
I would prefer to land and rod on that.
So can you just say masonry, does that cover it?
Well, planning commission, I mean, the, they're, they're going to. It's like, say, brick, stone, granite, stucco, terracotta, or.
We have a big statement.
Just email me what you want to say down.
So we're, we're good with the. Sorry, Mr. You just stuck on it.
I'm just going now, so, so if it say.
I think we should be.
I said, it's probably wood out, it's, it's, it's stucco, rock, and stone, and, and, and tile, and get the masonry. So I'm making a motion, if this ordinance offer third bit by pie only with this edition, and we just discuss under H, and with the section fifteen that allows the caveat that we can issue a stop work order, we, uh, not, we pay any failure, we need the warrants.
And you need to add, the fact that this has guidelines to it?
Yeah, everywhere that says guidelines, we said warrants.
Have a motion of that. Do you feel what he's just?
Yeah.
Second. Oh, not second, no. We have a motion in second.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Uh, Rock Brown?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Like Terry?
Yes.
As about the order. An ordinance repealing ordinance thirteen dash ten, for the guidelines in replacement of the adoption of current designer requirements in the city of Greenland Art Club, is offered by Act point eighty-six of nineteen eighty-seven.
Take the news trail. Street partners, well, we're just waiting to get a bid for it.
I just want to hire a contractor, just did concrete work on the main walls, the hillside, office, culverts, and, uh, I don't think it's going to go to twenty thousand for, for the contract, but, it's looking concrete to work. I want to figure out what is up this week, okay?
Make a motion without this ordinance?
Second.
Is it supposed to be under emergency?
Under emergency.
Yes, it'll, we'll want to start working next week.
The motion is second, second, oh, sorry, I figured, I figured.
Ms. Brown, you want to put it on freshening with all them?
Yes.
Second.
Why, why are we waiting to get a bid?
The, uh, the bridge is, is getting the road is underneath.
So we don't have time.
Yeah, the time's busy.
Right.
Do we have any others to recall?
Um, the contract says it's going to less than two thousand, put the concrete works on. We have a motion in second.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Turn on to.
Yes.
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
James? An ordinance waiting to get a bid to bridge here on Meadow Bridge Drive, and the street department declaring emergency programs.
Make a motion, we split the rules, wait a second, Terry.
Second.
Motion in two seconds.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Make a motion without ordinance?
Second.
Motion second to the top.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Make a motion.
Terry.
Are the management.
They all make them. Yes, they are.
No, can you move back to second?
Second.
No, they, they don't make it.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're up.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes, yes.
Hal?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, go ahead. Number four, discussion for grounding of water mills option.
Do we have an idea how we can communicate that?
Uh, I think those, just printed on water mills themselves, uh, I think Mr. Tim may have some.
Well, my word about the double gets that, but.
Yeah? We, we discussed this a little bit in our department meeting this morning, and.
I really don't.
If you don't want to, I'll be back there.
No, I'm opposed to, uh, people don't like, I think that's fine, but that's, that's how Fort Smith does it, that's just, uh.
Where, where?
Rather, rather than.
Oh, you're asking a lot, I read that before, right?
You may add a tax, definitely, some certain parts to the recreational building, build contribution, and there's, there's a method, there's a total. Problem is, we deal with card stock, and we can get that kind of information on the card stock, it could be expensive to, uh, if we were already outsourcing our building, Fort Smith, probably outsources our building, possibly out of. Bill contribution, and there's, there's a method, there's a total, problem is, we deal with card stock, and we can get that kind of information on the card stock, it could be expensive to, uh, if we were already outsourcing our billing, Fort Smith probably outsources our billing, possibly, I don't know if James Fort does, lots of people do, there's a possibility for that. The benefit of that is you get lots of information, putting out sources like that, or passing information.
Hey, has the water commission had that yet, since we talked about this? This came up, this came up just in a budget study session, this idea of, you know, trying to figure out a way to maybe raise some more money for different things, parks being one of, and, and, and the topic came up with giving people the option of rounding up their bill every month, and donating whatever was rounded up, whether it was a quarter, or fifty cents, or seventy-five cents, to the parks department. Uh, we have three thousand customers.
Over a thousand, starting seven hundred, it varies.
Could be fifteen hundred bucks a month, extra twelve to fifteen thousand dollars for parks, if people willing to do that, you'd want it to be completely optional, you don't wanna try to make a hidden tax out of this deal, it's just really, you wanna do it or not, and it's really just a brainstorm idea, if it doesn't make sense to do it, it doesn't make sense. If there are other reasons to maybe go to outsourced the billing, maybe that's up to the Parks Commission wants to discuss, maybe we just refer it back to the Parks Commission, I'm sorry, Water Commission, and then, uh, Florida, and then y'all, uh, have different respects.
Are they rounding it up on here?
They're not, they're just asking.
They're rounding it up through the assets for concrete.
It's a little different than what we were asking.
It is different, I mean, the.
Mr. Rager, do you have a thought, Dean Chairman of the Commission?
I would, I mean, we'd entertain it, this is the first we've heard.
Right, and like I said.
Maybe a better way to do it, since, since we're not asking for monthly contribution, maybe we could annually send a letter, turn off a lot of the water customers, saying if you'd be willing to round your bill up, and then they just turn it back, and we can annually, instead of saying it was each bill, you make a commitment at the beginning of the year, and yes, I'll round mine up, send it back into y'all. Not everybody do it, some would would.
They should have an option to also cancel.
Yeah, pay the option to cancel, call it.
I think, when, when you, I think Fort Smith probably does it that way for a reason, that you have to actually, because they're writing that in, because, you know, these bills change all the time, and that, giving that feature around, uh.
Fort, Fort Smith, I had, I just checked one time, saying I would like to round my bill, that's all I did, and I get the bill, I've been doing that for years, and it just rounds up to those.
Where's your money go? Where's your.
They call it the.
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 Okay, I don't pay my bill on, uh, here, we go, we pay our bills. Online.
Yeah.
Auto pay, whatever you call that. You can pay whatever there, so his bill is like that. You need another mechanism to, like that, electing to do that.
Well, you just see the letter, I want to see you say you wanna do it, you hear, and you say, yes, I wanna do it, and then we set up the water, obviously, we give the bill automatically, we round that.
Are we gonna have a call down here and tell you we'd like to do that?
No, we'll sit out, and I'll stand and turn, say, and say.
And mail it back to you?
It's just like, I don't.
You just check, I just shoot from the hip now.
How did you do it, by letter?
How did your vision say, you check the box?
Yeah, on one of the bills, it said that you don't like to round.
It was on your bill.
What I'm saying is, most people these days don't bring their paper bill down here and pay it.
Well, I think the way it's set up, it's just set up so that the billing would automatically.
It just rounds it up, your bill's gonna be rounded up, you're just gonna get the bill the same way you get it back.
With that already on it, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, how, how about?
Right, I understand that, but when you send me the bill, and you got that little thing that says, check this box if you wanna do that, these people aren't sending their water bill back, so you can find the checkbox. You see what I'm saying?
Right, I think.
Are you gonna have to call here and come down here and say, go ahead and round my bill?
Right, I love the idea of sending out something and allowing them to elect it, and then just.
Yeah, one time, one time daily, yeah, one time daily, annually, you can stop at any time. But maybe, Steve, would y'all be willing to discuss that, because it would have implications within the billing area, and I think too much sugar for a dime.
No, we, we can look into it, we're just, we would just be the mechanism for the.
Yeah, but if, if.
Your decision is to.
Right, but if we just, there may be some things that would influence our decision, if you came back as a physician, said, look, we talked to the people in the billing, and this is gonna be a whole bunch of hassle, it's gonna cost the water, the park, and more money than it's gonna raise, and this, then I would be like, well, that doesn't make any sense.
So he gets pennies at the expense.
Yeah.
Well, I'd attempt to continue to look at it, and.
Yeah, maybe make the call for Smith, and see how they got their pennies for parks going, and if it's something we wanna try.
And how you administer the pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we explored outsourcing, and we wanted outsourced, sometime that, but it wasn't quite meets the force, too, but. That's, that's the beauty of that, you should get a lot of information on it, and of course, we've had a whole, whole different mailing system, and probably God, probably doesn't.
It'll round.
I mean, the, the billing was kinda, uh, had to be modified, when y'all switched from.
They're gonna pick.
A thousand gallons, a hundred gallons, right, or something, it had to be modified at that point?
Well, that's, that's a different aspect of it.
Okay.
That's our connect, uh, measure, bigger reading program, that, that basically is a multiplier, that, in fact, did that, I don't know how to explain very well, but, uh, I can see some costs, it would probably be smart, because it's almost as in there, you got, each one of those bills have to be posted, and thirty-seven hundred bills every month have to be posted, and so, now you're making a little bit of difficulty posting, uh, you can do that on, on one.
You post it, just like you do the sales tax.
You may as well not post it, neither show it.
Not with that, don't put it on down.
We just, uh, it's not, maybe we just let, uh, let y'all discuss it, and come back with the feasibility.
I think the easiest thing would be to send out the one-time letter or card, and have them check it off, and.
I just don't remember how to work with water sewer friends only in that, because parks.
The line, the, the billing that we get, the day, the day we get, just like adjustment or.
Yeah, well, I don't know if it was.
Take it out of line, and it says rounded dollars, so. Parks.
You collect the recycling.
Right, exactly.
It's no different, it's just another.
Yeah, I think that's true, that's a good point.
Good?
Yeah. Yeah, if you say, it's not a new work, you can.
Thank you. Number five, ordinance revealing privilege, license fee.
Well, this is counsel one of this, it was my study session, they talk about, um, doubling the privilege, so. I just provided you the, just the ordinance we have in two thousand eight, and then, all of this is really going there, I did do also a section for pro-rating, and, because that's something that, especially now, that you don't want to be good. Section five, was what we, because I've always felt bad for people coming in in November, and it privileges, now they have to take it to y'all, and they're around, and they're, and I don't want to be done, but this isn't fair, but.
For how many do we not collect?
Uh, knowing, my dilemma, I have a dilemma with this, I live here, I have for some time, I forgot, it's a big construction that comes from out of town, that, that may not be doing any houses in London this year, like, I'm sitting in a renewal notice in January, but if they're not gonna build any houses, do any work down here, they're not gonna get one until, I do that. So there's that legacy thing, why would they take their privilege license here when they're not gonna build here, and maybe they come in later in the year, and they decide, you know, somebody's hired, and they do it, it, it's been a problem, because.
We haven't agreed on Fort Smith, either simply pay or privilege license.
It's, it's state law, actually, that says when you buy one in state Arkansas, they're good in any city unless you have a first order business in those cities. So we have to honor it, that will honor theirs, they've already got one, we're spent, we honor it.
So how, so you're saying somebody only works because of eBays a year, and just happen to be here?
Sometimes, yes, I, I have a whole list, builders, and all those.
So they have one somewhere.
Well, they might, they might, maybe they don't.
Have you ever collected the two percent leave charges?
Yes, I have.
You're gonna come off a minute?
Yeah, yeah.
What?
Like, it's everywhere, right now, it's twenty-seven fifty, if you come in and pay the labor, it's two dollars, it's just like that, and then just, I can get laid in there, I remember.
But we've got those that work here today. All right, so, this is what I think we need in, I think we need a section seven saying, construction permits will not be permitted to businesses or corporations that do not have a privilege license, and let's put it on somebody to check them, Charlie can't check, these, these guys are not in front of her, but they're in front of, they're in front of the building department.
The way we deal with it is Dawn gives a list for me, who all has paid, he's adamant, diligent about coming back there and saying, do they have your license?
Again, and he hasn't paid it. This labeling is some sort of.
Before he.
Policy that we haven't, you know, pinned down, but we're writing in here, and it's a law.
I agree.
City attorney says he likes it.
So what do you want in there, section seven or section?
I want, I want a section seven that says, structure permits will not be permitted to businesses or corporations that do not have a greater valid privilege permit, privilege license, because there again, we reciprocate with other towns, my, my.
It'll be like section six, and then six will turn into seven.
Let's put it on the building department, that's just another thing on their checklist, if you have a privilege license, where does that? Unless, unless she said, Dawn does a pretty good job of that. But again, this.
What issue is?
Our policy lacks sometimes.
Well, I don't disagree, but sometimes the ones that are, and I'm not talking about building a house, but if they're out there remodeling, they don't commit to get a permit, or they don't have, they don't have license, I mean, that's what you're talking about.
Anybody, anybody in state Arkansas knows, two thousand, anyone's gonna do that, so they'll have contracts.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
You know, look, we, we have a, we have these, we have laws against committing criminal acts, but there's still people running around committing criminal acts, that's why we have a, the vice police force in state Arkansas, and, uh, they do a good job, but there's still people out there that are gonna do the wrong thing, so, we, we need, I, I'd like to add that, I don't know if it's the right place, but.
Well, if you like, section six, and then section seven will become that, which is a sexual, that's always a period, yes, all of the matter.
My next question would be, where's all that, where's that fee money go?
The general one. I think eight thousand dollar revenue here, I want that, round out.
Could we add into this thing, to, uh, Charlotte's point earlier, on this, you know, I don't know if you put it in section four or somewhere else, that, now, after some point, if you haven't paid your fee, it's revoked. Instead of carrying on a ten percent penalty.
I think, I can get one?
Your privilege license has been revoked.
I can't remember if they don't do it. That's the one you get.
They don't have. Please, Charlotte, stay with the.
The one that has it, though, is my part paying the bill.
Well, Daniel, it says.
They don't pay the bill.
It only continues on to the amount of the fifty dollars, and then it's, uh.
That's it, yeah.
Brings from Shepherd Barbershop in town, and it's not paid last year, it has paid this year, it, it'll, now I contact them, and I say, settle it down, usually doesn't pay then, that, that works, but there's still operating fees gonna shut down, they don't pay it, they're.
Chief, I actually have to go down and.
Yeah?
Collect the water, the leadership, uh, I think, five.
Row.
Little friend, a lot, go down, keep it going, five dollars, you're dead, let's go, you know?
I don't know, I mean, they, they don't get it, you can't revoke it, if you don't have it yet. That don't happen, then you have to offer it. That means it's only.
Everybody that had one in two thousand seventeen.
Expired.
Expired on the thirty-first.
Yeah.
So you don't have a list of those people waiting for them to come back in, you don't wait for them to come in and buy it?
Well, the, I really rely on the water office, because they come to me for it, they're the ones that are receiving.
I'm sorry, I give a bill every year.
I'm gonna be allowed.
I give a bill every year.
December of the twenty, I ain't gonna worry about it.
I'm just wondering if a, I mean, if a new plumber comes to town, you're just hoping he comes by.
That's what I was talking about, you have new coming town, they come to get a building permit.
That's where we get it.
That's where they do it, right, where you give them that permit, and you make them do that privilege.
If they're not getting a permit, don't they operate without paying it?
Really? And Tim, Dawn checks every one of them, and if they say they've got a building permit in enforcement of anger, and he calls in to verify it and all that, before they ever get a permit, so.
How do you convict these people?
Um, I filed suit back fifteen or twenty years ago, to try to collect them, and they might not have to pay, like, eight or nine hundred dollars, except twenty-five hundred dollars.
But you have to.
Most of these people I know, most of them are good business for the end of the day, and so, instead of filing suit for that, I'm just, Charlotte tells me, I go down and tell them, I really don't wanna do this, and if you just pay me twenty-five dollars, I'll, I'll pay if you pay me back, and, uh.
Well, can, what I was gonna ask, you can't assess the penalty without this declared misdemeanor conviction.
And all that's in the court?
I, I mean, actually, I could issue a warrant for their arrest, you'll do that process, and that, yeah.
And all that's in the court?
That's all that is, is, that's why.
We don't.
I've never, I've never done that before, but I, yeah, I could, yeah.
Instead of saying, shall be guilty of misdemeanor and upon conviction shall be subject to a fine, you just say, if it's not paid by January third, it's subject to a fine.
Well, we, we did, uh, just like it wasn't real happy, so they said, um, that, uh, we gotta go through him, so, I might have to go there again, I have to, uh, if I'm passing on the will, but I'll say words.
And also, when this, if this goes down, and if you wanna, I don't know if you wanna do it under emergency, or if you can, or whatever, that you could put it on three readings, but once a victim's executive, whether it be June, or we do the old reading, um, does it apply to people new coming in the door now, then, I guess? So anybody coming in after the effective date of this ordinance is starting this year, but my billing, I've already billed out for the twenty-five dollars, people have already paid all the time.
You're talking to the.
So it would apply to new businesses, I guess, kind of, if you.
Thirty days after, what is that?
Yeah.
Well, if you pass emergency clauses affecting upon passing publication.
Yeah, I mean, sort of, tomorrow, kids, they get off, thirty past. They'll do that.
Yeah.
So that'll be next week. So, I don't get out inspections for construction permits, and I'm gonna listen to the tape, say what Rock said.
I think we should add that, section seven, I don't know if we adopt the ordinance, but the additional section seven.
Good, I'll first read by title, okay?
Yes, sir.
Right, motion in second.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
And Terry?
No.
Left Terry?
Yes.
As the Board of Majority, in ordinance repealing ordinance number zero eight F zero five, establishing an altercation tax, just to bring clarity on emergency and brotherhood.
Make a motion without second, Terry.
Second, motion in second.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
And Terry?
No.
Left Terry?
Yes.
As the Board of Majority?
Make a motion without the ordinance?
Okay, motion in second to adopt.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
And Terry?
What are we doing here?
Without.
No.
Left Terry?
Yes.
As the Board of Majority?
Pause, maybe, and mark, mark, applause.
Thank you.
Motion in second, talk with Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
And Terry?
No.
Left Terry?
Yes.
As the Board of Majority?
Thank you. Let's see, who's next? Chief, who's likely, one, two, four, five?
Mayor Kenzo, Mr. Terry, Mr. Hammy, the council, uh, what I have for you is a, an ordinance, uh, for rising election, block, block program four, for eligible employees, and city agreement, based on our volunteers, a little history behind this, the, uh, several years back, Lockheed, uh, had a benefit, whole four plan created, uh, helped a couple of departments that were trying to find another way to, uh, help bring in volunteers, and they weren't wanting to increase pay at those places, and, and that sort of thing, so they said, I believe, we get a little bit, we're willing to pay more for the retirement, so, benefit to Plan Four was created, and, uh, I guess that's, uh, it's been, uh, two, I guess, three years ago, uh, we discussed it with fire department, and, uh, it was overwhelming, the guys didn't like to adopt that plan, so we discussed it. liked to adopt that plan, so we discussed it in our, buddy study session and everybody was pretty much in favor of him and it just kind of slipped away and never got enacted. And then next year I went back and kind of did that again. And so this year it came up and I've graciously, I've, I've looked at this director this year that is working very well with me and we've gone through and looked at. And what this does is right now a pure firefighter and we've been on the city river fire department for twenty years and you retire after twenty years, you're going to get a hundred dollars a month and retire. If you stay about forty years, you're going to get two hundred dollars a month for retirement. Like this does is doubles that to make it for every person for twenty years, you're a volunteer, you're going to get two hundred dollars a month, it works for you, you're going to get four hundred dollars. It's just a double, double the plan, double the benefit. And we discussed that several years back and as I said, it never, never happened materialized. And what I found out after calling Lockheed and found out what wasn't happening is that within ten days of vote, you'd have to follow this ordinance or pass an ordinance and you have to follow within ten days of Lockheed. And so that was never done. And this year we decided to ask for that. Now, here's something else that has come up, here's what we normally pay, we normally pay about twenty two hundred seventeen dollars a year towards the retirement of thirty three firefighters. So that's five dollars and sixty cents, sixty cents per firefighter per month. We had to talk with Lockheed, I guess back in December, we were told it would double to ten dollars and sixty cents per firefighter, making that less than forty one ninety seven is what we will be paying. And Tom and I both thought that's very reasonable and what it had added. Well, today, thank Charlotte, Tom got ahold of, hit some files.
Alcohol.
Charlotte alcohol.
It's the same as.
And hit some files, stuff from Lockheed and they corrected and said, no, it's actually twenty five sixty per month per firefighter for a total of ten thousand one hundred thirty seven. So we would have the budget on top of our forty one ninety seven, another fifty nine hundred and forty dollars. So I'm going to leave this up to you guys. Five, so it's five sixty is what we've been paying and corrected, corrected what they would require now is twenty five dollars and sixty cents per month. That's by time, that, I mean, this is what it is, if that's enough for that point. I asked the finance director for somebody I could have the fire department, firefighters elect give one call, get one call, lay it back into it and then we discussed if that's not an option. They say, well, then you're, what, you're basically penalizing them, one call, they'll fund the retirements.
They can't contribute to this, this is an employer contribution.
Before you add an obligation. So I'm just basically writing for you, we'd already had it on the, had it on the agenda and before we realized it was going to be an additional, kicking out a hundred and forty dollars a year and so.
Tom, what were your comments?
We asked whether we exclude, adopt this or not.
When we did the budget, who came and told me about what the problems were the previous years and that's why we went ahead and said, give me the cost. So while he was in my office, we called them, the informant came out due to our finest city director, city clerk in state Arkansas. That's on record too. I just wanted to know, she had some problems with, the lady gave us the number of ten dollars and sixty cents. We now know where it came from, she quoted it off of, off of the amount that's listed as the index rather than what the actual rate was. And she even gave us the, the ordinance. She had a problem with the ordinance when I presented it to her because it was referring to new volunteer, new participative program, not existing ones. So this morning she felt concerned enough about it that she called, talked to somebody else who actually knew what they were talking about and gave the information and now we're, we recalculated it at the twenty five sixty and that's putting a set of budget down to an unbudgeted amount of fifty nine hundred dollars right at six thousand, so.
It will need a budget resolution if it doesn't pass, we don't have it through.
The only ability, the other thing I would say is, is the whole purpose of this, how it was established was to help us get volunteers. And we've advertised for two weeks, we've had, we've got twelve applications, so it doesn't mean we're going to pass the, all of the business agility tests and all that. So we probably moved down to that last time through. But what I've, what I've noticed is the pool of fire, the pool of guys that we have, the older guys on the department that all have their own businesses, are all able to leave within moments notice is getting smaller and smaller. The, the young guy and girl that's working for, working now is working for somebody and that somebody is, whether it's a big corporation or a small, is saying, no, you cannot leave. And I've actually had a person on the department in control this year that too, for trying to, wanting to be a fireman, their, their work felt like they needed to be there. So our pool is getting smaller and smaller. And so any minute that we can have, we're not going to be able to raise our pay anymore, we're maxed out right now. I'm really, really hiring that. There's reasons for that, as with Lockheed, if we get too much, then they get considered full time pay and you send the problem to full time Lockheed. And so this is just something that we thought would be a bit of it to try to help us on the improvement, but the guys, like they're there right now, this new plan will start today so they wouldn't retro back unfortunately. So they're really, the guys that are voting for it, aren't really voting for themselves, they're voting for the future of the department, but they're not going to see much of it. They may see three or four years, some of them might see ten, but there's a few guys, whether you want to adopt this plan or not, it would help us with some recruiting. I would say it's going to be an end all be all, I'm not going to come and work for you if you don't take this plan, but anything that will help us.
Is that really going to be a number? In section one and I guess it's from there, but this applies to thirty three firefighters.
No, you just checked, you checked which ones. Firefighters and blitz.
But then it.
Y'all have to decide.
So it applies to the firemen currently.
Is the volunteer in, in B four program or whatever this is only for volunteer firemen and policemen? So it doesn't say, I mean, it just says, to see if we're in our side, if we're agreed to let the following group of employees.
Yeah, we're all, we're all B three now.
Makes it sound like all the policemen and firemen who are working for the city's employees are now going to be on.
No.
The volunteers, the volunteer employees.
The B three or BP three and BP four plans are just volunteer service with calculations. That couldn't have anything to do with full time.
It is inferred because of my argument.
It's inferred by that.
It says enhanced requirement of volunteer.
Correct, it's, it's inferred.
Yeah, it's the benefit enhanced program. And there's one more thing you need to consider, if you go to that paragraph that talks about the twenty five sixty, it does say down at the bottom, employees, employers rather, will not receive premium tax assistance for the portion of the employer contribution. That's the turn back that we were talking about that we're getting, that seventy six thousand will not be calculated. This will not be impacting that. We technically cannot apply that towards the cost of this. You do know that when we get that seventy six thousand dollars, we do a portion of cost to total basis between the fire department and the police department. So theoretically, we apply it against the department, but they're saying we don't get any premium tax help for this, so.
Also, they, it's in the welcome letter, the, it's like BP four provides volunteer police officers, volunteer firefighters and lockheed.
The point I wanted to make about it was, I wanted to be painfully clear who this applies to. If, if that's a list of names, would probably be great.
That's.
Well, as of this date forward.
Yeah, sooner or later.
We've talked about that, you know, ten years from now, was Lance Terry a fireman when this thing got initiated or not? Yeah, I think he was, I don't remember, I don't know.
No, he was, this was initiated in nineteen ninety two.
You know what I'm saying?
We say when we switch from B three to.
We're switching over, it's already this.
It's currently on the department.
It will apply, a lot of them from today forward with, with what they have in the past. So say you've got ten years on right now, you've got.
Maybe, maybe Daniel's just wanting to clear accounting, who, who admitted.
It was on what?
It's on our title.
Well, this was, Lockheed controls that because we have to submit to them the names of everybody we get billed.
The added cost that we'd have to come up with in a resolution would be fifty nine hundred dollars.
That's right.
How about?
So Lockheed's going to tell us though, who applies.
Lockheed builds out a high individual because we submit.
Fifteen years from now, there's not some discrepancy.
We submit the name.
It's all in the state.
An electronic bill.
Let them do God.
Let them do years of service.
He wants to attach this to the ordinance and I'll follow.
I don't see an emergency clause in this ordinance.
And file. You just have to.
Section five.
Well, do we need an emergency clause? I'm first reading my column only, but that'll give us time to come back next month with a budget resolution, give us a couple of months to look at how the budget's going, do we add the fifty nine hundred, do we not? And we can put the list together. So I'll make a motion to put this ordinance on for reading my column, first reading my column.
Yeah.
Motion to second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Frank Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Next Terry. Unanimous, an ordinance operating in the election on Lockheed benefit program for eligible employees for the city of Greenwood. I'm grabbing a V in there, for city of Greenwood. I'll correct that on the next one.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I guess we didn't check in there firefighters police officers, do you want those checked in that?
Do we have volunteer police officers?
We have the.
Reserve.
What do you call them?
I don't have a chance to look at.
I would say this come back next month for reading so I can see what's on the line.
So what if that could reserve costs?
Right. So for now, we'll check both.
Are they active, are they pretty active, your reserve pens?
Okay, you want them both checked now?
For now, we can change later.
Okay.
That's probably the problem with either one of them is if there's a guy that's not making fire calls or meetings, it will be included, so.
Yeah.
That needs to be addressed. And if you have reserves, they need to be, you know, ten hours a month or whatever it is, they all need to make sure that they're earning this money while it is in service action to.
Our guys aren't.
We have bylaws if they don't make certain meetings or.
Right, yeah, there's, there's policies already in place for, and spirit, that's mine unfortunate.
Number seven is finance.
This is a health committee manager that I raised and I'm thankful for, it's all in the budget.
I was curious about this twenty, does twenty need work in the mayor's area?
No, it's not, for weird reasons, mayor's salary is not set on it.
I thought they were both years and the mayor's were both hundreds of.
Well, you do have that, but it's not my law.
That's setting, that's setting.
State.
I mean, the meeting area.
I'll make a motion to disordinance, meaning the city clerk's salary per the ten eighteen budget on for, first reading my column.
Now, this is a deal where if for some reason she doesn't get reelected, we can go back and change it, lower it back down, all that. We could do all that.
Take that and order.
Motion to second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Terry.
Yep.
Next Terry.
Yes.
Ordinance repealing or replacing ordinance seventeen dash zero two and amending ordinance number sixteen dash zero nine establishing salary and regulating expected work hour and benefits for the elected city clerk trainer, city of Greenwood, the county of Arkansas.
I'm going to make a motion to read it, second, third reading.
Second.
Motion to second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Any questions for that emergency clause?
Second.
Motion to second to enact emergency clause.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Next Terry.
Thank you. You know, I don't have the ordinance out too, thank you, counsel for, for regular support, much appreciated. My wife thinks she's worth it. That is actually all the items on the agenda, this time we're going through department reports and questions from council.
I would say that I think the bill will introduce and make sure.
There you go.
He's waiting, he's been waiting.
He has been waiting. You lost your crown.
Throw a quick, Jared, I know it's coming tonight, he's here, he worked for enforcement and everything, something out here, private enforcement he did and he was running for sheriff under his local department. Been a good friend for a long time, very fresh officer of enforcement and pushing work, I don't know if he has anything to say, but I wanted to introduce him tonight so you guys can listen.
Thank you, I did not intend to speak tonight, I just wanted to come down and see how things were going, but I appreciate that introduction and I am running for sheriff, not because I'm looking for a job. I retired in May from the police department and for twenty five, I got two years of enforcement and learned that my take home pay as a retiree was higher than my take home pay as an officer, so had I known that ten years ago, I might have, you know, made that decision then. But my point is, I'm running for sheriff because I have a passion for law enforcement and I think I should do some good things for this county. One thing definitely is I want to improve the relationship between the sheriff's office and the towns and the county and that's, that's what I'm hearing is that that's where the most improvement can be made. And the other thing is accountability, one of the main problems with law enforcement across the country is a lack of accountability and I, and I witnessed that myself, enforcement, people get more and more lenient, you give them an inch, they think a mile and before long you have, you know, problems and we had our problems, but I, I'm excited about this, I, my life is not hanging out of balance. There's two good guys that are running against me and I know both of them, I think Sebastian County is going to have a good share of one way or another and whoever did it, if it's not me, I will give my full support to whoever elected. But I appreciate, let me come down here and speak to you guys, I wasn't, like I said, I wasn't planning to speak tonight, I just wanted to kind of see how things are going down here and it was a pleasure to see how you guys worked together and get through some of these things. I've been working with these enforcement for years and not only my advice, but I'm not used to that. Congratulations to you all for being able to get through some of these things and thanks again.
Thanks, sir. I would say I think I've, I've been here for, I would say I think years, I've both got gray hair, but he's always been a real professional in law enforcement and I have some clients that he doesn't even know that I know, that fits the world with him, so I think he's even better person for today in the way he is law enforcement.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I always said, it turned grave, it wasn't turned loose.
Yeah.
By the way, that's not grave, that's arctic block. I would claim that, no, I didn't, perfect, I'm just saying.
If you can make the county, you win, don't be.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The council, would you like to hear from, Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Or Mr. Riley wants to hear from you, I guess.
Speaking of not probably.
Jay. Earlier I was meeting with the termite board, Lockheed Warriors in area and he finally
Uh, earlier I was, uh, meeting with, uh, termish board of law enforcement, area, and he finally gave me a proposal to sidewalk down Main Street. I have a copy over here.
We need to sit down.
You do need to sit down a lot. So this, uh, he did it with the majority of the sidewalk within the highway right away. There's sections of it that are not. And it is from, uh, essentially, uh, parts of Creek, I guess that's right over here by the car wash. Through to Liberty Drive. And, uh, his estimated cost on completion of that project would be, uh, one million ninety-one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. That's not including the right-of-way acquisition on the section, so it'd be up to that right away.
And that's from where, where you say that from?
That's from Hartson Creek all the way to Liberty Drive.
And booth to Willmore.
So, so, I was originally not paying attention, at the right time, this is the sidewalk, but then we go from Hartson Creek, which is here. All the way to. And it costs, it's both sides of the road?
Just one side.
So which side?
Uh, it jumps around from side to side. Kind of like, oh, whatever, we're gonna have to do a different street.
Say the cost again?
One million ninety-one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
As I was standing over in Monday.
And this would be?
We got ninety thousand in the sidewalk front.
And he did have, or not, impact when the highway gets up? Well, that, that was what he talked about for, he thought he could do it in a way that?
It would be, most, the majority would be in the right away, but the thing about the highway department is that they, they're to establish sidewalk in there and widen that road, they're gonna re-establish a sidewalk.
They're not gonna have to do that.
Now, I did get a letter today from the highway department about a, uh, walking trail grant. I haven't really looked at it a whole lot, just got that this afternoon. I'm gonna check into it and see what we can get from him on that.
With the discussion though, kind of, I mean, we knew that was swinging for the fence, uh, what you just laid out. Car wash, uh, uh, Health Depot. When you get beyond Health Depot, you start jumping creeks and all kinds of great stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, to cover, cover the commercial part, it was kind of a. Was that including? Getting to Health Depot, that'd be a big advance. Was that including a grid? Cause you point that, is that to cross the creek? I get it.
I'm there in Health Depot. See one bridge at, uh, I don't know if I can get this three years. I guess that'd be sort of a group over there by. Obvious. I guess it's obvious.
So, so, Chief, it would be too much to ask to talk to you about, about phases, dividing this into phases? Phase one being from Hartson Creek to wherever.
Percent of the time?
Yeah. And then section, okay, here's phase one or section one, it costs us much, section two here. And sit out here and look at landmarks that we think makes some sense, you know? And then all that to be with distance, I mean, it may, we have some infrastructure here already in this area around the square.
Do you want me to maybe get all the termish boards and have them break it up into sections that's like, say seventy-five thousand dollars? And that way we can start it?
Yes, yes.
Well, the other thing that we had talked about, if you were walking from the caboose to Health Depot, and I understand it's like, of course, it'd be, we'd all like to have a red sidewalk light something around the square. But if you're walking from that, those two points, a great deal of that is asphalt right now. And you can get off and, you know, mean, well. And you can also use the trail.
Walking trail, you can go, walking trail with current sidewalks down Main Street, and some of that stuff can get you to the caboose. And then, then you get to the, you talk about placing the bridge, you know, you just run the bridge from the trails to the caboose.
They're not talking necessarily about a continuous leap on sidewalk. You're looking for these pieces of sidewalk.
Yeah, I would say let's, let's look at breaking it up into stages or phases or sections or however you want it. And come back to us with, and then let us look at where are our priorities? Because if you don't have, you have to be able to afford one for one day and then, you know, I like ignoring that. I mean, I, I would, I'm really, I'm sitting there going, oh, for a million, man, what happened? That's why.
Again, though, that's not, that's not your right way.
Yeah, we would still have to go to the highway department.
That'd be a good road.
I think, I think most of the, the starting section of that is actually within the right way, so it will be okay.
If we could have a section from Health Depot to McDonald's, that would be the most used section. That's where you constantly see pedestrians. If we could get a price just on that section, that would be a great starting spot.
Well, yeah, from Denver, from Denver to Health Depot.
Crossing though. How would we get people crossing?
I expect you wouldn't be crossing.
Yeah, you'd have to go from Health Depot all the way to be quiet at Denver Street.
Yeah, you have to go from Denver to Health Depot.
That would be a very important section.
But, but if you could get from Denver to Health Depot, and we're talking about scaling the trail from Main Street down to, down to that section, it'd be long.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're Hartson Bridge or whatever.
Then you start to make some connections for people in neighborhoods, meaningful neighborhoods in the city to be able to get out there. And you also provide for those folks that we see on the retirement center, which is the, just what scares all of us to death. Gives them that path. To me, I probably define it as that would be priority number one section and then move different directions depending on.
Another comment we don't have tonight in this, Philip, uh, was rather than battle the state for right-of-way use, but was to get down into the private lot, you know? Work with the property owners of, can we run a forty-foot section of sidewalk, you know, on your, on the head of the property line? Like they got the duplex.
Casey's will have a sidewalk on their property.
Casey's, I mean, they got, there's the two duplexes there and Dr., uh, Dennis, uh. You know, I think all those people would work with us still.
What about that church?
I think we'll get a lot of cooperation about it.
How hard is it to go back with that, with that and get it into kind of defined again?
I don't think it's gonna be that hard. I'll, I'll get with him tomorrow on that.
That'd be great.
Try to find something for you next month.
That'd be great.
I also got a hundred and eleven ounces on that in Stonebridge. The color replacement, I wasn't too quite sure on the sizing of that. I, the termish board's being back that the, uh, what is in place right now doesn't even match the ten years of warmness, flood. So, uh, usually typically those are ahead twenty-five years. It's gonna be a pretty good sized structure. I don't have, I just got this this evening, so I don't have any prices on anything. But, uh, I'll start seeing what we can do. Do this in house. It might be something I might have to bring up there to do with the size of the sidewalks.
So Stonebridge is going based into the entrance where Meadowbrook is?
Meadowbrook's actually, Meadow Brook.
Meadow Brook.
Yeah, and then Stonebridge is actually over there on Stonebridge. That's all I have. You guys have any questions? I got the, I got the landscaping, you got the round fence too, I figure Rob was like that.
Rob, did you hear this?
I missed it, I was breathing on me.
We got bushes, roses. They're like, they're dead, so they're stuck in the sand.
Those are. You didn't ask for water.
I wouldn't build something that's.
They're resucked.
They're repurposed lands.
They're going out.
They look like, they're crooked and they have like.
Hey, God, that's very.
Proven, but.
Those are good. Have you got the paper ready? It's coming, it's coming.
That could be another two thousand dollars built, keep that landscaping up.
Four thousand.
Actually, we have, we as, uh, team, as a rest, loving beyond to combine those bills to see what's gonna come out of it. I saw it from this information today.
Combining one thing, combine them at a wholesale discount rate and another.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay. I mean, we, I combined it right now, so it's about fifteen.
I did add it together. So far, what I saw was Station Two, I believe, I don't want to quote too much, but I believe that one would be, you know, just leave that one. That was a discount.
Okay.
He wants a three-year contract.
What, he wants a thirty-year contract?
He wants a walking three.
Oh, yeah, for sure. There's no problem. I didn't see, it's a ride, there's no problem.
So we're, we're negotiating there.
He wants to reduce it seventeen hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, was it seventeen hundred? Seventeen hundred.
Is that adding the recycled bits though? Is that adding the recycled bits, landscaping boost thing?
Actually, it wasn't Station Two. Mount Sun. Okay, uh, the department report, anybody speak to the department?
Mr. Green, water guys, we had all the water guys leave?
They're gone.
Water, water, water. I had a guy call me, said I'm dirty when I get out of my shower. Now, all it is, is I got this water here out of my sink in my kitchen before I left. It's fine. I don't want to know what you think, quote the bottom of this stuff, but I know I'm too drunk and holding, I'm feeling over it. Maybe I'm used to it, I'm forty-three, it's tasty to say, I don't. Well, I'm gonna ask those guys, they're stuck out.
I think your answer would be?
I told him to call James Ford, because those are our daddies over there, that's where the water goes. They, they should have all the answers.
That's what we're telling all the water.
I don't think you should script free whatever is at hack.
Well, uh. You know what I was talking to? His parents live up on Wright Hill somewhere, Blackstone, they're also on due for, they have an age role, they're just, I don't know.
Maybe you're a career fellow too.
Well, I don't know. But I, I just.
We are, I, I've talked to Tim, Greg, I mean, I, they just thrown somebody in the bus, I was like, you just want to get, you know? That is the issue, is the lake out there.
Well, that's, and I.
We're told the water we're producing, I'm told the water we're producing is good. We buy water, so we put good with bad.
So.
Well, I mean.
We paid unbelievable amount of money to those guys. Well, we paid unbelievable amount of money to those guys for, we hope quality water.
I thought you were contractually obligated regardless.
We paid unbelievable amount of money to these guys for quality water. Supposed to be quality. Right, right. So I would say put up with that garbage into our stuff and we'll, for some reason, have our water sub still subsidized. Well, just so you know, I voted against it, you can go back and check that out, wait for your time. Of having water subsidized for a city. Amazing. But I just seem like, there's kind of, I mean, you just set the green and bear it, I guess.
Sir.
You have to green and bear it, I guess.
Rules of the water department have been green and bearing for quite some time. They get those calls and lights and.
Office Health Department says a show off.
Don't let them check.
Well, they have, they have actually suggested.
So it's just a, it's just a drought at their lake down there. Now, we were told that, that they had plenty of water, Russ and everybody else.
Says it's low.
That's because they've got eight thousand G more customers than they ever had. That's just, I mean, we'd like to put that.
So you guys, I went down and spilled me the damn green with like, and it's actually some water running over us. So it's kind of amazing, and they said they have a drought over there, or like it's full.
There's about seventy thousand million people drawing out of that lake, like the waters in there.
Counsel forum, I think Mr. Terry has an item for you.
Unfortunately, um, and a question, and we don't want the discussion of the rally of water built back on the next agenda or not?
Yes. You're all just saying, let's just wait for, let's just assume they'll bring back some kind of.
Wait there for the mission.
I mean, I don't have to put it back on there.
I would say like.
Okay, I'm gonna put it on there unless I'm dead. All right, y'all had to ask a question last meeting about that retirement stuff. Um, especially Casey had the questions about finding, and from Ross, about finding a local investment professional. And so I, I said I was gonna look into the retirement committee, the regulations of it, and how it's made up and, you know, kind of chain of command of how that decision was made, going from Voya to Lincoln. And I got a plan document and it was last amended January twenty sixteen. And it has a section dealing with administration of employers' plan. Just real quickly, I want to let you know how that goes, or to the plan that city council adopted so many years ago. And I, I did visit with our retirement attorney with Friday firm today for about fifteen minutes. Name's Brian Smith. And went over this with him and referenced state law and the city council's role in the plan. So this, this plan administrator is the city of Greenwood and of course that means the city council, because you're the legislative body and in charge of our fiscal condition. Um, and then the plan administrator, so you guys, then appoint trustees, who right now is Tom and myself. And you're entrusting us to do whatever's necessary by either your direction or the investment committee, which is the retirement committee's direction, to make changes. The decision to go from Voya to Lincoln was, he assures me, the retirement attorney assures me, is not by an instrument of adoption from you guys. Because you've already done that by giving us the authority. Um, we listened to that committee voted on because of what Ann Kinder told them, uh, and decided it was a good idea to do this move. And I was just telling y'all as a, you know, as a, I don't know, a nice even whatever, just to let y'all know, because I felt y'all needed to know, it's such a big decision to make.
Who's over retirement committee?
It's a number of individuals, Gray Cross, Vince Chankowski, Sunny, Simon, Danielle, um, Tom and I attend and the mayor attends. We don't vote, but we, you know. Anyway, so hold up a second. You do have freedom to say, I don't like this and you don't, don't do it yet. I mean, it's, I've got it in limbo right now. It's Lincoln has sent us a welcome letter and transition specialist to get this done. Y'all are okay with it, well, go ahead, I'll go ahead, I'll tell them I'll call tomorrow and tell them to go over a lot of work. But, um, on the item of investment professionals, because I know it probably will, a lot of y'all feel that we should have a local one. If you want us to explore a local one, we can. Sure. We'll do it. Or keep using Ann Kinder, it's up to y'all.
I'd like for you to explore local. I think local, we should use local everywhere I've worked here. Whether it's food, banking, loans, tire.
And she didn't tell us that she'd move. Whatever to tell us, so I didn't, I thought she was still with farmers. So that's local.
I agree with her, move local if you can.
Okay, we will do that. And then, so that, that's kind of how the flow goes, you know? You guys are always in charge of orders or can tell us as trustees to do something, you know, you all agree with something. But this is just how it goes. I mean, I looked into it because I was curious myself, like, so what is the power of that retirement committee? It's actually called an investment committee. Some, just the little information, Google, we can explore that, if somebody else is. Do you want me to bring back, us to bring back choices? Let you choose or anyone?
I think we trust the committee and the process.
You want the committee to have an opinion about it?
Yeah, just kind of do some work. It provides the same.
Okay, we'll do it.
If the committee looks at it, the best deal for everyone in the committee is not local.
Then they'll do it.
Yeah. But in the meantime, we are going forward in the way of Lincoln transition, correct? As far as I know. Okay, thank you.
Well, now, I would just say in the meantime, you're going, I mean, to me, it just wouldn't be, I guess prudent to go with the transition if you're going to entertain somebody local. But then you'd have to do two transitions.
Well, no, no, no. I mean, just go from Voya to Lincoln is a, they're the custodian, they're the pot of money. And we're switching from Voya to Lincoln because, as she provided all those documents, I don't know if you looked at them real close, but it's going to be make money to the plan, according to her. Ten thousand dollars a year or something like that.
Because they combined the previous couple of the plans we had.
If you just change the plans within a, within the advisor, we're asking you to look for a local advisor.
And I just found out, I can understand that she's came up with this new plan and she led farmers. I mean, she put state farmers, was she, you know, kind of with this new plan or was she not?
Well, that's a, that's an unknown.
That is an unknown.
Because ethically, you would think that she would do what's best for us. She did paint that picture, she said that there was an administrative nightmare with Voya, it was very hard to deal with. That was the first thing she led with. And then she talked about the financial impact to the, to the plan itself. So when she actually painted that picture to the investment committee, she sold it and said that, you're gonna see a return on this. It's not, well, I'm not doing this for my benefit, I'm doing this for your benefit.
She even said she doesn't get money.
She doesn't get any money from it. You know, I, I guess that's the way they looked at it, is it was a good opportunity for the, for the plan as a whole.
And they wanted to do it.
Yeah.
And it's made it. We didn't have that.
Legally, she has a fiduciary duty, and she reaches that duty. We have a duty.
Well, I just find that, uh... Well, I just find that, I mean, she didn't come up with it, Boya wasn't a hassle until she, you know, you know, moved out.
Oh, she's been complaining about Boya for some time, she has, I have a better problem with it.
Lincoln Financial's been around for a long time.
So, I mean, I don't know if it requires a vote or what, it's okay, just go forward with it, I don't know.
Well, based on what you said, that they've already given the investment committee, it's around the responsibility, can we actually rescind it?
We are, we are, we are just asking, we're just asking, is to try to do local if you can. Then we will, yeah.
Only if.
Only if.
Was it a Dan or Spud or something?
No, there was one dissenting person.
It's funny, because we.
I didn't know you was on there.
Did a complimentary.
Fair.
Yes.
I've been actually working with Ann on some stuff, a lot of, before we did the seven D plan, she's been awesome to work with, so, if you're doing that tomorrow, I need to know, but, I just want to tell you, I don't care where she moves.
We are doing it.
She's not more for me than what.
Like a mother to.
Been, been a need for funding and stuff like that, she's taking care of a lot of people work, where I haven't had to do much on it. So, I'm a little surprised, because, Carl, I don't have to judge this stuff.
And we've been assured that we are keeping our third-party administrator that we work with, well, ever since I've worked here with the Osborne and Ferrero Associates, her name is Valerie, she's been there fifteen years, she's very, very good in her job, so, we'll still be using that same entity as our third-party administrator, which is a big deal to me, because she's the one that's going to deal with it.
And so, Ann stated she makes no money off of it?
She stays.
She did stay, yeah.
Anything further, council?
Yeah, I have something further, I want to know where we're setting the pass, our little alcohol tax ordinance taxation deal. I want to know when Mr. Niles, if he would be able to get his stuff back on the agenda for next month, is it now, or are we gonna do it?
He would go to the mayor, or what y'all want to tell me about my plan?
We need to wait for the thirty days for the ordinance to become law.
That probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
I mean, it feels like, it feels like we gotta wait for the ordinance to become a law, and then that's the law, and then, you know, which, what the frameworks are that we're looking at.
All right, so I have a question, would you like ones the planning commission needs to request a variance?
The, you need to wait till it's a law.
Thirty days will be up before next week.
And so, the thirty days from now would be a law, and then the planning commission would have to work within the constraints of that law. So it'd be the planning commission meeting, it would be in March, which would be?
Third Monday.
Third Monday, March.
And you would go?
He's gonna ask for a variance.
Sunny Bailey on the end of that.
Yeah, for the ordinance.
That's us. The next council meeting will be well past thirty days, wherever that's where it starts getting on our agenda.
Well, then, if it's possible, whoever likes to do it, I just, put it all on the next month's agenda, I've actually purchased property, it's a thousand fifty-six feet, uh, unless you still want to.
Yeah.
So, you know, that way it's, I mean, I guess sort of satisfies everybody.
Well, do we have to get on the planning commission's approval, and then y'all do it on?
You're talking about another plan.
The variance just approved, like, ah, does it cover for law?
The variance, the, the. Variance on a land, that's nothing to do with that.
No.
That's a issue.
He's talking about the restriction on, go to each other.
Yeah, I always want a variance for the restriction on four current location, because, being honest with you, I might just drop seven hundred thousand dollars on a new location, that is what it is. So, if you're gonna request a variance from the current location, and get that passed, and then be able to possibly.
He's wondering if he's willing to plan it for that variance term thus.
No, but, you're asking for variance on this ordinance.
Yes.
That will be on thirty days.
Yes.
It'll be a year.
So it's not quite, yeah.
And, and, guys, I understand why you voted no, why you voted yes, but I don't want to waste your time and my time. Am I gonna get the same no's from the board deal about the variance?
I think we all committed to this law, it was pretty bad in the process, and, I, sorry, I can't speak to what anybody would do with the variance in front of them, but, uh, we talked through this ordinance pretty, pretty consistently.
Why are you asking for a variance on, I thought you said a thousand feet?
I want a variance on my current property, right now, it's been, well, I. Yeah, and, and, I understand why it's a thousand feet, I, I get that, and I understand.
I don't.
Well, I, 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 I don't, but, I get.
You're lucky.
I get the intellect, I'm in it, um, so, I do, but, I don't from a business perspective, uh, but from a, um, personal perspective. So, I, I, I'm, not mad at nobody, I mean, you're just, you're doing your job, um, but at the same time, uh, I, I'm in a position where I have a, a nonprofit that's been in business over a year, so, I can actually, in, in, in things like the sidewalk, and, and stuff like that, we need, and, and so, I understand, I just don't want to be put in a position where I have to wait under six months to put back in the fly again, uh, because I've requested and y'all denied, and I have to wait six months, um.
And you're, I'm sorry, you're, you're gonna, your variance that you're gonna be asking is on your current property?
Correct.
What is the business now?
Pretty busy.
Oh, I thought you said a thousand fifty-six. On the other piece of property, yours?
I mean, everybody, I mean, good businessman, that's plenty, uh, but unfortunately, I don't have to enact from plan B.
Yes.
Uh, so, I mean, I would just go, let's go with A, let's, uh, let's get some money into the city, but I don't want to sit there and waste your all's time, or my time, uh, on the decision that you've premeditated, we gotta have in your head.
I don't know if we can get both from that one, we've been, I probably won't get both.
I don't think that we can, bros, that issue, because I think I heard, Tim say he wants it on the agenda, and Charlotte's put it on the, on the next month.
You're waiting thirty days.
Yes, man.
Now, Charlotte, they already, uh, are we thirty days, thirty days actually, or just?
March thirty-four.
No, but he wears a twenty-eight day mark, he got twenty-eight.
And March fifth is the next week.
March is twenty-eight days.
Yeah, it's not thirty days.
There's a process, you know, you just gotta.
I'm gonna get an application.
You've already five days in the, right?
Last question.
Okay, go on, break them.
Uh, last question. Uh, if required for a variance, I'm not actually applying for, uh, the, uh, application. So if my variance is denied, then I still have the right to apply for the application?
Well, the law will be in effect until after the, after the March meeting, so you'll have to adopt your variance in April.
Okay, well, but, but if I'm denied on variance, I'm not denied on application.
That's right.
And so I can still apply on application at another property that's been denied on variance?
That's correct.
Okay. So, April.
Let me ask you, Mr. Attorney, I mean, just, I want us to understand this, because this is what's coming. We, you've got your ordinance, it out, it lays out the, the process, and the application process. The process is, you know, as defined as in the ordinance, here it is, you bring it to the council. If you don't meet the requirements of the ordinance, then they could give you some variance, I guess. But there's not a, there's not a per se variance process in being an application process.
Right, you're just seeking for prior approval, so.
There's an application process.
What it reads is, no permit will be issued for establishing less than one thousand feet without prior approval from the city council.
You'd see.
You'd see prior approval before he puts in that application.
And I think that's only equitable and fair to him, or he thinks he's gonna do that for everybody else, because he's got a plan B, and.
Which, which was discussed, you know, as we went through this over the past few months, of, of, I think it's Mr. McKinney, of, you know, you ought to, you ought to say, here's the process, step one, two, three, four. I don't know how well we define that.
He did, he just said, seek prior approval, so I, I think what he's doing is, he's gonna, let's say that he didn't have a place of business, and, and he was wanting, somebody was trying to hear one about property that was nine hundred and ninety-seven feet from a daycare. Well, they, before they even started the process, you know, they just, the ordinance, they need to seek prior approval from us to, to say, okay, yes, we're gonna let you do that.
Because the, the, the application from the city is an ordinance.
Yes, correct.
Right.
We're using the word permit, as really we're.
So you could theoretically come here, you're not talking about an ordinance, you're not talking about an application.
You're just asking for permission to start the process.
It's no different than the conversation about grabbing water bills.
Yes.
Well, then, do you have to type up some kind of application, it says, in there, to be in writing a form for Bravo City, and, because I want to have information to make, to draft the ordinance, I have to have their information about their name.
Well, you're either, you're either filling out an application, and you bring forth an ordinance for us to vote on.
And you need all the requirements, so we lay it out, you can just come to you and get the ordinance and put it on. If you, if you missing one of these, specifically the thousand feet, you gotta get prior approval from us before you can start this process. So what I think what Mr. Niles is asking is, council force next meeting after this is the law, which is April, and say, you give me approval to get, to go ahead and move forward with, and, we have already once voted no, but that was before this was passed.
The one vote of yes, and also.
Yeah, that's true, right, so.
So is a variant, and I'm sorry, from, uh.
Really not.
Is a variance in an ordinance the same thing?
You're just asking for permission, the way this law is written, you're asking for approval.
So if a, if a variance in an ordinance is not the same thing, then, then the application would not apply to the, to the, to the variance, because it's referenced to the ordinance, so, legal terms, I don't believe that I would actually need an application for the variance.
I might ask somebody this question, when somebody asks for a variance from the planning commission, what do they have to suggest?
They have an application for variance, with that, you know, voting.
But we didn't, that, we didn't define that in the law we just passed. All of a sudden, the law we just passed was seek for our approval, and so, we'd have to go back at some point to mend this ordinance to have that, right, as it stands, I bought it. Whoever it is, whether it's him or somebody else, they just gotta come to ask, ask for prior approval, we can say yes or no.
There you go.
And then, if we say yes, will they go ahead with the process, they get three readings, just like everybody else, it'll be the passing ordinance, we know. If we say no, you're wasting your time on an ordinance, you go find a property that meets these criteria, is that what it is, right?
If Charlotte had an application for variance along with the application for, you know, for late night.
I'm not saying we shouldn't have it that way, I'm just saying, we just spent, uh, months passing the law, they've been having that in it, and, what it has in it is seek prior approval, which is what?
You know, I don't know whether you would need it or not, if somebody comes in and presents a plan to you, and y'all look at the plan, and, and, uh, it is less than a thousand foot or whatever, and y'all look at the total plan and say.
Well, I think there's, there's other, I mean, there's other things that can happen, because you can have it be nine hundred and ninety feet from a daycare, for Miss Tina's. And Miss Tina could come in with the business office person and say, I got no issue with this, guys, I'm the only one around, it's nine hundred and ninety feet, I got no problem. And then we, as a council, I think, would say, all right, we give you permission, then you put your application in, and you still got three readings on an ordinance before it ever, before they can ever go apply with the ABC commission, I, I mean, I think keeping it simple.
Just a reference, does the council allow me to adopt the, uh, variance that planning commission has, just for proper paperwork and procedures? And therefore, there is something on record that would go with the application, and we just simply adopted, uh, the, the kind of official grant?
Probably, that's not the way the law reads it, it passed the law, just, she's just gotta come seek approval. And take in that application.
All right, so, basically on April.
You show up, and you ask us, I've got a property that's less than a thousand feet, it doesn't meet your requirements, we give you approval, you seek, and we either say yes or no.
Okay.
If we say no, then if you got a hundred feet of property, it's a disservice.
Okay.
That's what we just said. So you're, for me, he comes here and says, I'm, I'm eight hundred and five feet, is that okay, we say yes or no, or say yes, then he presents his application by ordinance.
And you have to do three months of reading.
Part of the discussion, what we're in.
And I think it's just straight, I think it's around three hundred feet, just being honest, uh, so it's closer to, it's closer to zero, but it is two thousand.
Property line, property line, that is now.
Then it's probably two hundred feet, probably on the property line.
That sounds like a variance.
Well, we may need to amend this ordinance at some point, you know, and here we are, we're not even, not even into the process, we're kind of a little.
Yeah.
But that's, that's, I mean, that's what we're always, that's why we come back and appeal these things, and repeal them, and change them, because.
Didn't you say prior approval to the council? Oh, that, that's, that's your variance outage.
But if we want to go back and make it formal at some point, good, we just have to.
Or just do what state law says, it's zero, like we did the rest of the ordinance, you said, we'll, we'll.
Well, I just think that in time you alter an ordinance, you're, you're in a variance.
Yeah.
Well, if you have a variance, you're not gonna get a ordinance.
Right. The way we're, we're creating the variance, we're just doing it by vote of the council, it's just somebody asking approval, it's just not a formalized process.
So, we don't have to do a new ordinance, we're just gonna.
That if we want to formalize the process, like they do in planning, so that they have to write, app, you're right for a formal's variance, then we have to change that, because right now, it just says.
Well, because the planning got posted forever, or when they're gonna put the signs out there?
Yeah. I said, Drew, that can be handled within the council, if they, a lot of it, you have to, have to publish.
Yep, right, we'll see how it looks out in a couple of months.
Thank you for your time, Phil.
Thank you, anything else, council?
One.
Sir?
One.
Hi, are you, are you there, are you?
Yeah, totally forgot, I, I, I wrote down, uh, called the mayor, I made the mayor, he's done, he's well.
We're all calling.
We have all the calls, they're first thing, and we're calling back there, you know.
That's right, I'm just, I just don't want to run out of time. Sorry.
Yeah, there ain't no ground broke after I was seventy-one years.
Uh, I informed Michael Lejeune about our, y'all's approval and process, and the budget passed and all that, and he, he left town. He was going up to Montana Business, uh, but, uh, the company that's gonna do it, uh, Circle of Construction is gearing up, and they are sure that they can do it. We just gotta get Simon out there, we didn't do it this week, because Mike was gone, I wanted him on site, and I, I dug that, did anything. So, I think next week we'll be able to get him to boot some dirt, and Mike, Circle M is very much aware of our.
Deadline?
Deadline, and they say they're gonna design.
Travels doing it in Ohio? Travels lives in.
Uh, well, he's back on the distance, I think, with us today, I mean, he may, he'll be like that, I'll buy that to him.
Travels lives in the city.
Yeah, that's true, as he does.
A black one, Charles.
Unlike, unlike. I want to make a couple of statements, as you know, always do, uh, I want to say, remind everybody of a tragedy that happened last week, of AC Brown's son, Elliot Brown and his family lost their home in Fort Smith, uh, I mean, completely, although they have insurance and that sort of thing, but, uh, you know, we can't do much to replace memories and stuff, but I know there's two, Phil Fundy accounts, and former bank account, I believe, so, so, think about that, if you do, if, 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 if that's not doable, certainly remember that in your prayers. Uh, I've never lost a home, but I can only imagine what that is, and I know they have two small children, so, picture, tough, tough thing, so, remember those, that family. And is there anything that we can do specifically now, or, or let us know?
I see, it's, it's great, good, so we sure appreciate that, good.
And they're, are they living with you guys, I mean, just curious?
Well, they're down to that apartment, so, they're making that apartment, or kind of house hunting, deciding whether or not to rebuild, is that an act?
Maybe they need to come south a little bit.
They're together, so it'll be nice, yeah, we said we had a lot behind our house, but hopefully they have a deal on that.
I can only, there you go, I can only imagine that the people that are still here are thinking that tonight was my state of the city address, that's why you're here. And, and I hate to disappoint you, it's not, but I'm, fair warning, it's next month, so, uh, I, I know there's bets being made.
I watched what you gave, was that, are you doing it every other month?
Every other month, so, I know there's bets gonna be made, and already we're probably in charge, and all that, and how long it lasts.
I lost the end last time.
So, just for kicks, it's next month, so, you got something better to do, I can't. So, just for kicks, it's next month, so if you got something better to do, I can't imagine anything better to do than come through my statement. Thank you for being here. Again, a lot of business done in a fairly, not too bad time. We have a lot of stuff to do, so thank you. Appreciate everybody, and, uh, I think we got a good thing going.
Thank you.
Oh.
I mean, you like a motion, they're ready to adjourn, or...
That's right. Make some rules.